Today's date is April the sixth, twenty twenty one. We are going to call to order the Duncanville City Council for our briefing session, working session. And in accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor on March sixth, twenty twenty is extended by the Officer of the Governor in June twelfth. Of twenty twenty, the City Council for the City of Duncanville conducts City Council regular meeting by video conference at six P M. On Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty one. In order to advance the public health goal of limiting face to face meetings, also called social distancing, an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. However, there is no public access to the physical location. Anything else I need to speak about will come when we get into the City Council itself. Audience is in listen only mode, and those who have registered to speak when we come to time council will be called upon, or we have written comments that I will be reading. For City Council members, all votes will be by roll call vote, as we have been doing in the past. So with that, we will get underway with our work or briefing session. And the first thing that we have on that agenda is for City Manager Aretha Faro Benavides to discuss the consent items. Ms. Benavides, it's yours, please. You're muted. There you go.
Okay, consent agenda item A is our minutes from our regular meeting. The second item B is consideration of a resolution approving the terms and conditions of a professional engineering contract. For design service for Cherry Hill Road for fifty eight thousand dollars. This contract, the alley project between East Cherry and East Center Street is next to the alley of Forest Hill subdivision scheduled for replacement. The city has slowly replaced the old asphalt alleys in the neighborhood over the last few years, and the trash trucks go down the alley and tear up the asphalt. So the alley will be designed in F Y twenty twenty one as scheduled for construction in twenty twenty two. Construction cost total is over four hundred thousand dollars. Mostly funded by the alley fund and paid for with a portion of our solid waste bill assessment and some drainage fund. The designers, I E A, and the design of the alley, design, designed the alley at Madrid and Grenada, which is currently under construction. The number C, our C, is considered resolution authorizing incorporated amendment to professional service amendment. Declay cooperation master plan any amount of ten thousand dollars. It's a planning consultant. As we were recruiting for our planner, we continued our work a little longer than anticipated. And this was also a extension of that contract. On D, the resolution for the micro surf pavement from Viking Construction through Grand Prairie. From unit is an estimated expenditure of five hundred and ten thousand dollars. E is the consideration of the resolution, as we've talked about before, of the tube night vision goggles with helmet mounts and tactical for our police department. Through the city's competitive bid process with an estimated expenditure of seventy five thousand dollars. And the last, but not least, is the consideration of a resolution authorizing the cooperative purchase of athletic supplies and equipment from B S N. This is for our, our, our larger facilities. I can't even think today. Via buy board for equipment for an amount of seventy five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments, any council member wishes to ask Ms. Benavides? Mr. Cooks?
Yes, Ms. Benavides, would you remind me, I think, in the contract with the trucks going down the alley? And I know we have funds in the alley funds for this, but do we, does Republic get? Do we allow Republic to do any type of, of discounts or something for trucks going down the alley? On the Alex like that? I know they have to, but remind me if there's any funding from them that helps us to repair alleys.
I will ask Mr. Rayne to respond. I'm not quite sure.
There, there's nothing in the, in the funding for them to use the, for they use the alleys.
Is there something we need to consider in the future? When we talk about contracting that since their truck is going down the alley and you're having to always repair those over a period of time? It's just some type of, is any other cities, maybe, let me just ask, is any other cities at this point using? Any funding from the trucks, from the trash trucks going down the alley?
I'm not aware of any, but we don't usually charge anybody for using city right of way.
All right, a big truck sure costs us a lot of money, but okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Benavides? Mr. Mr. Harvey, yes?
My question has to do with the increase of ten thousand dollars for planning consulting services.
Yes.
And so in looking at the budget. The budget has a position for a city planner. And that position was budgeted in this fiscal year for eighty eight thousand dollars. And there are actually two positions budgeted. One is city planner and the other one is planning technician. So you've got two positions budgeted for salaries and benefits of eighty eight thousand, two hundred nine dollars. Under the services and maintenance category. I noticed that the budget for it has steadily increased from twelve thousand, three seventy three to sixty seven thousand, two sixty eight, and I imagine the underlying reason for that increase was because of the third party service of planning.
Yes, sir. Basically, during, when you had a vacancy in the position, we'd hired the company to come in and you budget that in a different line item. And I'll let Richard verify what I'm saying. And so what's happened is he did not come on when we thought. This actually was on the country for the extension of the contract to have some carryover between two, between the two positions. And so our city planner is on board now, and we just had a little bit of force over between the two of them. Richard, is there anything from a budget standpoint that I'm saying is incorrect?
Uh, no, that is correct.
So my question is, then there are sufficient resources in this particular initiative as budgeted to to provide adequate resources for the third party planner? And the planner we just hired along with a planning technician?
I don't believe we're keeping the third party planner. So basically, we, Greg.
So, yes, yes, ma'am. So to answer your question initially on the budget, what we did is we backed out. When we set up the twenty twenty one budget, we anticipated having interim planner for six months. And we backed out that portion of the salary, out of the salary portion of the, the planning budget. And put that money into the contractual services portion of the cities, of the city planner budget. So that's, that, so it's really what we did is we moved the labor dollars out of, out of salary, out of payroll into operations. It was a six month contract. And just by virtue of the, the, the work that was done by the interim planner. They, and, and by, you know, and when we were able to onboard Sky, we just need some additional funds to cover the labor costs incurred through, during the, the period of time to get us to when Sky got here and then provide us some funds to cover the, the cost of his transition of the responsibilities from Andrew, who was our interim city planner to Sky, who is our, our full time city planner.
So I think he's asking, is Richard? Is there funding to cover it with the salary savings is what I think our council member is asking. Based on the fact that he started late, then there's more money in salary, so will that cover the contractual amount?
Yeah, it should, it should be fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Now I have another question. Um. This one is on the micro surfacing pavement treatment services from Viking Construction. It says here in the staff report that a micro surfacing treatment would extend the pavement life until resurfacing becomes necessary. So my question is, how many times a street can un-micro surfacing until resurfacing becomes necessary? In reading that, it appears to me that this is an interim arrangement to try to extend the life, but at some point it's going to need to be resurfaced. So how many times do we do that on a street? Well, am I making sense?
Yes, sir. I can, I can talk to that. So the micro surfacing in the ideal scenario is that the micro surfacing protects the street from any kind of moisture penetrations from the top. So, and moisture is what gets into the cracks and eats up the pavement from the top, from, you know, from rain or from snow. And starts to cause it to break apart. Provided that the subsurface is, remains whole and there's nothing underneath it that may cause some kind of underlying failure. The idea is that we would perpetually only have to micro surface because the only way the moisture would get into the road is from the, the top. When we have to go and do mill and overlay, the mill and overlay prescription in terms for restoring pavement is again the result of, if we didn't get to the road in time to micro surface. We haven't really been micro surfacing, but for about four, four, five years. And so the only alternative previously before we started to micro surface our roads was to basically crack seal them and then just wait for them to fall apart. And so what we're trying to do is put in a preventive measure to take care of the roads, to extend that life. So that with the goal that we wouldn't have to end up doing a mill and overlay because our preventative treatments are, are sufficient. But in the case, you know, what it does do in other circumstances, if, you know, they end up down the road having some underlying problems. It does buy us time in some areas so that we can get to, that we can, that frees up dollars so that we can flex some of our, our budget dollars to the roads that need the more immediate mill and overlay solution. That's, that is the other than a total road reconstruction, a mill and overlay is the most expensive pavement maintenance activity. And so the idea is to not let our roads get to that point. That's, that's, that's our goal and why we, we try to incorporate. You know, a, a pretty sizable portion of our, of our street budget into you know, taking care of the roads before they, they degrade. Did I, did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I got a follow up question. So in a five to seven year period, does a city have the ability to micro surface all the streets that require this treatment? Do they say you do it every five to seven years?
We frankly, we don't have enough money to, to micro surface the entire city in seven years. Our goal is to stretch those dollars, hit the ones that are most at risk. And so there is some level of, of triage that we, we do to keep, keep our roads in the best condition possible. And, and as we've, you know, talked multiple times in budgets is that we, you know, our, our, we use the pavement study that was done in twenty fifteen to help guide us in determining how we allocate our maintenance dollars between micro surfacing and mill and overlay. But to answer your question, I don't, I, we don't, we're not budgeted to do the road, micro surface the roads on like a five to seven year rotation. We just do our best to keep them going and get to them as, as soon as possible, sir.
So what we are, what we are doing then is the best we can with the resources that we have available. Is, is that a layman's way to put it?
Uh, yes, sir.
And we're attacking those roads based on the study of those most necessary to use those funds so that the mill and overlay can be avoided for the longest term possible. So the roads in the worst possible condition are approached or attacked, I'm gonna say approached or, or re, or doing the micro surface as soon as possible so that we can push back that mill and overlay to work, which is much more expensive. If I've got that right, Greg.
That, that is correct, sir.
That's the plan, but it'll be interesting to see if we do that.
Councilmember McNabb and Councilmember Jamison both have their hands up.
Mr. McNabb, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and Mr. Rayme, I, the question really kind of goes back to you along the same line. Would, would you please tell us like how much the cost would be like versus crack sealing versus my, then the, the paving we're talking about and also versus the mill and overlay?
So, so crack sealing is, is a very small portion and usually crack sealing is a precursor to a mill and overlay. Big picture, we probably spend about ten percent of our budget on crack sealing and that, and that takes care of what we need. The two major dollars that we look at are the mill and overlay versus micro surfacing when we look at our asphalt roads. And on average, the last time we looked, micro surfacing is about ten times cheaper than a mill and overlay per lane mile.
Okay, and Ms. Jamison, you had your hand up, please?
Yes, I just wanted to address that. We have always had a schedule that we do streets in a schedule that is provided by Public Works because no city does all the streets at one time. It is, it's a schedule that you go on and you do the streets as they come up. And that way it's fair, more fair and spreads the money out. It's, you never do all the streets at one time. Way too cost prohibitive.
That's the way to do in Seagoville.
In Seagoville what?
In Seagoville, they do this, a portion of the streets at a time because you can't tie up the whole city in doing fixing streets.
Well, tying it up and spending the money, two different, different things, but the same. I'm sure citizens wouldn't like you tying up the whole city repairing streets, but also it's just, it's cost prohibitive.
Understood.
Okay, I'd like to get us back on point if we could in terms of any specific questions directed to Mr. Rayme in terms of the expenditure that's necessary to do this work that's on the agenda item. Okay, any other questions concerning anything on consent items? Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to briefing some presentations. Item two A, discussion of truck traffic along Frank Kessler Boulevard. Mr. Rayme, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Greg Rayme, the Public Works Director, presenting a presentation on Frank Kessler traffic. Next slide, please. Just some background. As you see on the map below, Frank Kessler Boulevard is highlighted in yellow. It runs from North Cedar Ridge across Hill City to, well, it's not Hill City. That's North Duncanville Road on the, the far east of the, the picture. Councilman Jamison requested this as a discussion about truck traffic along Frank Kessler. The city ordinance nineteen one sixty five designated has a list of all the streets in Duncanville that were portion designated as no through truck zones. And currently Frank Kessler is not on that list. Next slide, please. So at, based on Ms. Jamison's request, we went and did a, a traffic study at Frank Kessler Vicinity Jungle. You'll see that as noted, a location as the circle with the number one. And then as point of reference, we had some previous traffic studies done at North Duncanville Road and Cedar Ridge to help with, again, with a, a point of reference. What we found on, at Frank Kessler is that we had thirty six hundred vehicles and thirty eight trucks heading westbound and three thousand truck, vehicles and four trucks heading eastbound. What I did, because as you can see, the volumes are significantly different when you look at Duncanville and Cedar Ridge. But I wanted to see how the truck traffic on Frank Kessler compared to what we would see on an arterial to sort of get an idea of was the amount of traffic on Frank Kessler unreasonable for a residential street? And so what I did is I looked at it more on a ratio basis. And what I found is that the westbound traffic on Frank Kessler, that's the folks heading towards North Cedar Ridge. Excuse me, one out of every one hundred vehicles was a truck. And as you notice, when you look at North Duncanville Road, that same ratio is on the northbound of, of North Duncanville Road, which is, as you know, is an arterial and it also borders an industrial. And so we're finding that the one out of one hundred be, one, one truck per one hundred vehicles on westbound Frank Kessler is the same one out of one hundred that we were seeing on North Duncanville Road. And as you can see, the ratios on Cedar Hill Road are very light when compared to Duncanville Road or Frank Kessler. Uh, next slide, please. So the summary of my findings, again, as I, I mentioned. We've got traffic volumes eastbound and westbound. They're relatively the same, but we've got ten times the traffic, the trucks heading west and we do east. So it appears to me that the trucks are using this as a shortcut. And then, as I mentioned, westbound Frank Kessler has the same percentage of truck use as what you find on North Duncanville Road, which is an industrial. And then percentage wise, Frank Kessler has higher truck traffic ratios than what you would find on Cedar Ridge. So at this time, I, my recommendation is that we pursue or a, a, a no truck, no through truck zone along Frank Kessler. Next slide, please. Um, so do I have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rayme. So Councilmember Jamison, it appears that the interest in this truck traffic along Frank Kessler is verified and validated by the truck or the traffic study that's been performed by Public Works. Appreciate that being done and the recommendation is to go ahead and establish Frank Kessler as a no through truck zone. Is, is that commensurate with what you were thinking?
Yes, and I want to tell you, Mr. Rayme, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I had nightmares about a child playing in the front yard and running out in the street to get a ball in an eighteen wheeler running down the street. And we did not have this kind of traffic. It just appeared all of a sudden. And I had called in a couple of times and talked to Paul about it. And then all of a sudden my phone started ringing and people who lived along Frank Kessler were saying, what in the world's going on? All these cars are, I mean, all these eighteen wheelers are coming down the street. And some of them even stopped some of the eighteen wheelers to ask them, what are you doing? What are you doing driving down Frank Kessler? And they said that their GPS brought them there. So if Paul sent the police out there and they were ready and willing to go for it and calling back and said, what do you want us to do? Because there's no ordinance against eighteen wheelers on Frank Kessler. Heretofore did not know that. So I thought there was. And there used to be a sign that apparently it was for Cedar Ridge and not for Frank Kessler. And so I thank you. My, my people who live there, thank you. We all thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rayme, at a, at a subsequent City Council meeting, we will be looking for a change in that ordinance. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Councilmember Cooks has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Cooks.
Okay, hey, Rayme, thank you for looking to that as well. Let me just ask, because I have a very similar incident on Daniel. And, and so though we have the ordinance set up, maybe this is a chief's question and a chief and Rayme question. How will we enforce it? Because what happens is I have a beautiful sign saying no trucks. But trucks just pass right on by it and ignore that it says no truck. So that's not going to stop them. But then the other portion in your survey, did you find out what time of day that's happening? Would you can also share that with the police department? Because until those trucks is going to do it anyway, story, getting the word out that you'll get a ticket going through that. They're going to continue because I see them continuing on Daniel Road with the sign saying no large trucks.
Well, I, I'll have to defer to the, the police chief on, on the enforcement. In, in terms of the timing of the Frank Kessler, our traffic counts do give us some insight into the most typical times of day when, when a patrol officer or it's more likely that they would be using Frank Kessler in this case. At this time, we did not look at it. I didn't look at it for this particular briefing on a particular time of day. When my focus was just looking at the, you know, looking at it holistically. But, you know, to go along with what you're saying is I would be able to go back and tell the police, you know, these are the times of days when truck traffic was, you know, was most likely on this road. Based on the, the, the traffic study we did. But in terms of enforcement, again, I have to defer to the police chief.
Well, and again, before the police chief, about that traffic study, and you're right, because if we don't, I know the chief's gonna tell us that he can't just have just sit there waiting for it to come. So that study, hopefully, when you go back to cover up some time will really help. So Chief, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmember Cooks. You're absolutely correct. In order to be very efficient with our limited personnel. The traffic studies are very beneficial because it identifies times that the violations are, are occurring. And so we can assign our traffic officers and patrol officers to those various locations to enforce those violations. And as long as signs are properly posted and there's an ordinance that prohibits trucks from traveling on designated roadways within our jurisdiction, we're able to enforce them.
And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about truck traffic. And one of the things that they share with each other is they know that you have started enforcing and you're doing heavy enforcement. That word spreads pretty quickly among them that that is not, in fact, when you're using the Waze apps, it'll start to document that this is happening. So eventually people will understand that this is not a safe route to take.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And generally, quite often, it's, it's the same company, if you will, that's violating those truck routes because there's a need to come through our jurisdiction for whatever reason. And so, yes, ma'am, once the word is out, it certainly helps in that regard.
So maybe, Mr. Rainey, in your previous, when this has to happen again, maybe you can, instead of having to go back, you could just include that always in your study, that'll save some time. The timing.
Okay, thank you. Some good points and good feedback and getting the most efficient use of our police force in this particular matter, as Chief Brown said, is going to be extremely important to us as well. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Ramey? Okay, thank you, seeing none. Moving on to item two B, discussion on trash collection by Republic Services during the winter storm event. And this is Mr. Ramey's as well, Mr. Ramey.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, we'll be talking about the solid waste collection program. Next slide please. So I just wanted to run back through the history of our solid waste collection contract as sort of the framework leading up to the winter storm and the request that this be put on the briefing as a briefing item. So the previous contract that we had in place went into, was awarded back in nineteen ninety-nine. And so we had a bunch of discussions between the staff and city council on what do we want to do when the new, when the new solid waste collection contract came up? And you see a series of briefings that we did between staff and council on procurement methods, service level options, and what other cities were doing. And as you see, we went with Republic. We looked at some other options in April twenty nineteen to look at, see if we wanted to pursue a recycling center in lieu of curbside recycling. As you see, we had a new council sworn in in May of twenty nineteen. And then we continued our briefings with the new council, next slide please. So we had again in June and July, we presented, discussed different service level options with council. During the briefing session, we were looking at a service option three, which was unlimited bags, maintaining the unlimited bags, maintaining the eighteen gallon recycling bins on the biweekly schedule. The main change in June was to do the four cubic yards of bulk and brush. And, excuse me, or every other, every two weeks. And then in July, what was, ended up being approved by council was option, service level option two, which was basically the same service that we had previously with one change just to the volume of bulk and brush. We had, we had a solid waste town hall, as you see, the contract effective date was September of twenty nineteen with the bulk and brush collection at the four yards starting in October.
Mr. Ramey, I'm going to interrupt. Could we get to Mr. Anderson's point, please? His point is on the agenda is something to do with winter storm trash collection. So what was his concern and how is that being addressed?
My understanding was to put it on the council to discuss the response during the storm. So if we go to the next slide, please. Next slide, so it's just the bottom bullet there, the first part was we had all collection services suspended during the ice storms from eleven February through twenty-one February. Again, so we were, we were closed, of course, during the big winter storm, Yuri, but prior to winter storm, Yuri was a previous storm event where we also did not have service for several days. Next slide please. And you see when the garbage collection and bulk and brush collection, and so on April sixth was the request by Councilmember Anderson to bring this matter to council. My understanding was just from council is an understanding from an opportunity to ask Republic or ask questions about what happened during the storm? Why did we not get any garbage collected during that period of eleven February to twenty-one February, neither with both for commercial customers as well as residential customers?
Joanna Fritz is our representative from Republic, and I know that she is on the call. Possibly the best answer to this is to come from Republic themselves rather than from one of our staff who's going to be relaying that information. Ms. Fritz, if you're there, please, would you like to respond?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity. Can you hear me?
We hear you, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, as you know, Snowmageddon shut down just about everything. And we were in conversations with staff, city staff every day, even over the weekend, trying to make sure that they knew what was going on as we made the daily decision of whether or not we were going to be able to, to run the trash and pick that up. We did run commercial and industrial on that Saturday after the storm. And then once we resumed that following week, we prioritized the residential trash because we wanted to get that up as quickly as we could. And the timeline that Mr. Ramey has is the timeline, we prioritized that first. Like I said, we made daily decisions on whether or not we were going to be able to run. And we made the decision not to run residential or any trash that week because it is awfully difficult to stop a trash truck once it starts to slide. And we didn't want to put the citizens of the city of Duncanville in any danger as well as our drivers. We just didn't feel like it was safe for them to be out on the roads, for them or for your citizens.
And those are the sole primary reasons for the suspension of service during the snowstorm?
With safety, yes, sir.
I know that I had some personal observations of, you know, after the snowstorm, when the streets were not totally clear, but were in slush. And there were a lot of commercial dumpsters that I saw that still had not been picked up, you know, forty-eight to seventy-two hours after the main storm had passed and the streets were becoming more and more passable. So I think some of our concern is why Republic didn't resume those services when roads were becoming possible and is, and I'm just going to put, don't want to put words in your mouth, but did things get so backed up that, how long did it take Republic to get back on track to get all those dumpsters that had not been touched during the suspension?
Yes, sir. And that's, your point is well taken, that's, 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 if you, we've all been on the interstate when there has been an accident that shut it down. And it takes hours to unwind that shutdown as things, you know, begin to get able to get through. And it's the same when you have to shut down your trash operations for a week, getting that unwound is it takes time. Because the trash still keeps collecting. We saw, and I do have a few statistics for you, we saw a thirty-five point three percent increase in tonnage when we compared the six weeks prior to the storm and the six weeks since the storm. So we're still seeing the effects of the storm as people are beginning to pull out dead landscaping materials, still, you know, fixing homes and things like that, we're still seeing that increase in tonnages.
One question that comes to mind is we discovered during the storm that this was unprecedented for us in terms of the city responding to different aspects of damage and so forth. And I'm going to presume that the same type of unknown issues came up with Republic as well. So we internally are reexamining our own emergency declarations and our procedures. What is Republic doing to foresee another one of these big storms and how to get through it? Or is there any possibility of even changing anything because it still comes down to safety of crews and vehicles?
Sure, and that's a, that's a great question. I also have on the call with us Scott Hempel, who is our general manager, and Randy Halcom, who is our operations manager. And I would invite them to speak to this as well, since they're the ones that put these plans into place.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Mr. Hempel, yes.
Mayor, I'd like to speak for a minute before it gets too long and I don't get to say anything, I'd like to speak before they start to answer all the questions, before we even know all the issues, because there's a long list of issues way before the storm with Republic and the poor service that we get down here. And then after the fact, you know, we had to pay, we have to pay them whether they come pick our trash up or not, and yet we have to pay to take our trash away too. And the drivers tell me they don't get paid when they don't work. So, you know, this is not just about the ice, obviously, all of us know, in the case of an ice storm, there's only so much you can do and safety is number one. I've dealt with this for many years, you know. But this is just a poor, it's everything from not shutting the gates when their drivers leave to, you know, they, they charge us for every little thing, if we have a bag outside of the dumpster, they charge us for those things, but it's all one way. See, everything's one way with them. And to try to get any, any, any service, okay, it's, to talk to anybody, it's very difficult. And you get a lot of running around and so this, it's a, it's a series of, it's an attitude, it's a series of things, a lot of different things, it's not just the storm. The storm just really exposed it because we spent days after that with food, with food, health, you know, could be health issues without getting, being last to be dumped, to be picked up. So, you know, there's a whole long list, too much for this call to do right now. I just wanted to put this out there because we got a really long contract and there's nothing we can do about it. And there's commercial customers, we can't go even bid it, we're stuck with a monopoly on our trash. So.
Well, then, Mr. Anderson, your points are understood and well taken. What we need to do then, in order to conform legally to what the agenda item is, the agenda item talked about winter storm. And understanding that you have other issues, what we need to do is have those issues brought into Mr. Ramey in some fashion and those presented to Republic and we can have another briefing session or another briefing presentation from Republic addressing those specific things that you have some concern over. Because we legally have to stay on what the agenda item says. But I do understand what you're saying and with respect, that's what we need to do in order to stay legal and proper on this particular agenda item. So, Mr. Ramey, I invite you and Mr. Anderson to get together, please, and Mr. Anderson, enumerate all those concerns that you have over a long period of time. And so we can get a more detailed briefing from Republic in terms of their response. I do understand your concerns.
Mayor, before, I'm going to be acknowledge, Mayor, before they, before they go ahead and address that, that I'll try to stay within that same comment that Catherine Monty Anderson made, I think the poor service with the storm is one thing, but even the recovery after the, after the storm, we got false communication, whether it was the citizens who called Republic during that time, when they, when they were getting back up to run, our citizens kept getting, kept calling me that they was getting poor service and poor commitment after the storm was going to be, they were going to recover. And even one being a commercial church who said the same thing, this was after the storm and going to recovery. But I'll go back to a question that I recall, one of the main things on Republic's contract, and this should have helped during this time, that they were able, they were such a large company that they were able to pull other resources from other cities to help recover during a tragedy or a storm this way. And so I want us to know did that happen? Because the storm happened pretty locally here, with the company being as large as it is, I'm staying according to their contract that if they needed other resources, they could have pulled, and I'm asking, was other resources throughout their company outside of this area pulled to help? And if so, we still got the same false communication and poor service.
Okay, that question is on point, that question is on point and on target to the item, Mr. Halcom.
And also the pay, we had to pay that week, even though we didn't get service, we had to pay.
Mr. Halcom, going to turn it to you to respond to these inquiries.
Yes. So to answer the question, yes, help was brought into Texas, you know, because the whole state was affected by this storm and resources were spread out throughout, throughout the state. We did have some help here in Hutchins, however, not everyone was able to get the help. And when I say help, not just people, but the assets and the trucks in order to get us caught up and get us caught up quicker. So we did run additional resources and additional people in all lines of business in an effort to get caught up. As Joanna spoke to earlier, volumes across the border up thirty-five percent. Even though the streets were clear, there were still a lot of parking lot issues, any kind of inclines or dangerous turns, there were some locations that didn't thaw out as quick as others, so we would have to bypass those, in turn causing a delay on some of the customer accounts, you know. So we were out there every day, we maximized our hours and our assets each and every day until we got caught up.
To Mr. Cooks's comments, we were aware, most of us, of phone calls going to the Republic Service Center. And the responses from your employees, your representatives were vague, ambiguous, and basically not well understood in terms of giving a competent reply. And I think that's a concern as well. So the services in terms of the physical aspect of collection is one thing, but the customer service responding to our citizens calling for help or getting an understanding what happened was not satisfactory, I have to say. We had a lot of reports of that. So asking, please, you know, to inform your people that are on the telephones, that they are the prime link between Republic corp and our citizens. And there should have been some better training or some better understanding of how those responses should have been made.
Understood, and we will provide that feedback.
Any other inputs from representatives from Republic?
Why did we get charged? Why did we get charged for service that we didn't get when we had to, had to pay and many others had to pay to get rid of their trash another way? And yet we still got charged the whole month for all the service, just like they were coming every day.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I agree, that was what I was going to say.
Well, for most of the citizens, we still collected the trash, we just didn't collect it that week, we collected it the following week. I was not aware that you had to haul trash yourself. That wasn't something that I was aware of.
Others did too, others did, there's many that did, because it was stacked up, it was food, it was health, you know, it was food outside.
Like I said, we.
It was way past, it was way past the storm, it was the whole ten days, you know, it was more than just, you know, storm days. And I realize, I realize what happens, but, you know, and then we have to pay. So we have to, you know, all the commercials customers out there who didn't get service for those ten days or whatever still had to pay.
I understand, I would be happy to visit with you. If you would like to visit at another time, I'd be happy to visit with you about it and the issues that you've been having.
You know, I don't think it's an isolated case, I would hope the resolution to this would be Republic, go back to your leaders and ask what type of restitution could you give to the city of Duncanville that we could in turn return to any business customer or any resident and come back with an answer to us for that? As others during the storm time gave relief to residents in different cases of what happened during that time, I'd like Republic to take that same approach.
We can certainly revisit that, I just, I know the directive. We, we can certainly revisit that. I just, I know the directive from above was that we wouldn't be handing out refunds as we did provide the service. We did remove the waste. As I said, the, the volumes are up thirty-five percent. So I would make the argument that we hauled more waste because of, of this event. So the thought is that we still provided the service. It was just delayed by a week.
Well, Mr. Halcom, how about taking it up, taking it up to your leadership and telling them the concern of this council? And understanding the decisions that were made during the problem and subsequent to it. But this council has some, some deep concern as well, and we'd appreciate you addressing that and coming back to us at a later date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Who?
Me, Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Just wanted, Mr. Ramey, also, we have a performance-based contract that allows us to talk directly if its council's wish with them based on that contract. I think it was part of his presentation as far as we talk about our future performance that we can work on internally, if that's also the wish of the council that we go back and, and meet with them to talk about the delivery of services.
Definitely, that's the intent. It's not the intent of us council going and, and having this discussion. The intent is that this council is expressing displeasure. And this, this, this pleasure is going to be communicating to you and to our Director of Public Works. And those discussions will be continuing on with Republic Corp. and their leadership. Absolutely.
We will, we will take care of it, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, item two C is the annual city council calendar. I have one item to address, and I'm going to call it a council item or a council calendar item, because I think it's going to apply, and that is whether we as a council continue to meet virtually or we want to start putting dates on the calendar for coming back in person. I'm going to defer to Mr. Hager. Is this an adequate, or that's right, is this an appropriate discussion for the calendar? Or do I need to make it an item at a later date?
You need to make it an item for a later date, but I think it, it probably needs to get addressed very soon because the current proclamation is likely to be extended by, by the governor. So I think you're still going to have the ability to do Zoom, but I think you as a council can certainly, as things kind of move along and the vaccine becomes more available and more of us are immunized, that you may wish to return to in-person meetings.
All right, so council, if you would be thinking about this, and City Secretary, City Manager, if you would put it on our next agenda item, our next agenda for us to discuss whether and if we move back to in-person or whether we continue. Now, again, as, as Mr. Hager has said, there's fourteen days between now and our next city meeting. Not sure what's going to transpire. You may or may not be aware, council members, that there is legislation moving through the Texas eighty-seventh legislature right now to permit virtual city council open meetings to continue despite any force majeure, let's call it that way. Whether those are going to be, those legislative issues are going to be passed, we do not know, but they are moving through, through the legislature at this moment. So please put that on our, on our next agenda and city council, you know, kind of chew that around and, and have some thoughts next time we get together. All right, so City Secretary, the floor is yours, talking about the council calendar.
Next slide, please. I just wanted to bring some dates to your attention. The town hall budget meeting, we have that scheduled for next Tuesday on the thirteenth at seven P M., and that will be on Zoom. There is also a placeholder. I do not have the meeting invitations for the SEDA, but if you can email me and let me know if you would like to attend, I will get that over to you as soon as I receive that. And then also on the twenty-ninth, which is Thursday, the Fire Station One Public Forum, that will be on Zoom at seven P M. also. And next slide, please. And then, as you know, election is May first, but we also have the police memorial on May fourteenth and the fire truck pool on May twenty-second, and I hope to have all my council babies out there so we can pull another truck, okay? And that's all I have. Unless there's anything else y'all would like to add to the calendar, I will also email y'all all these dates.
Kristin, I know that there is action underway to do a memorial, a how, a Memorial Day event that Parks and Rec is working on.
Okay. I will get with Parks and Rec on that, and I will put that on your calendar and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
I had one thing for the calendar for us to consider, Mayor.
Yes.
And, and it is with the unfortunate times that we had to miss meetings for different reasons, whether it was weather or memorial. Do we need to consider having some type of workshop to catch up ourselves with staff? Where it seems like we're, we're running in a circle of the wheel that we can't get everything done. Do we need to set some type of workshop up and have, and see, and have staff to, that will help them catch up with anything they need from us? And it's probably a question more so for Aretha.
Yeah, Mark, it's, it's a good point, and I think Aretha's probably the best one to ask, you know, work with her staff.
I would say.
Come back to us and, and let us, you know, see where we can work a date for probably a good, what, three or four hour? Usually something like this, when we do a backup workshop, it's about a half a day event.
Mayor, I would definitely say between our budget and finance, really deep dive into next year's finances as well as some project updates, I think it would be nice to have just a workshop to go through and talk about where we are and what are any challenges we're facing. And I think it'd be good for all of us to make sure we're on the same page. So, yes, I would love to work on something like that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Cooks and City Manager. So we look forward to proposed date for that.
That's all I had.
Okay, we are right almost at the top of the hour. We do have two executive sessions to go through. We do have some citizens that want to speak, and we have two public hearings as well. And if we, my recommendation to the council would be that we postpone these executive sessions to the end of the meeting so our citizens can participate during the, during the city council meeting that we will initiate within just a couple of minutes. If, if that's acceptable to y'all, just, yeah, I'm seeing consent. Okay. So, City Secretary, we will move those two executive sessions to the end of our council meeting. So we are closing our briefing, working session at six fifty-eight. And if you'll all just stand by, we will reopen city council officially right at the seven o'clock hour. Thank you. Shoot, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, is extended by the officer of the governor on June twelfth, twenty twenty. The city council for the city of Duncanville, Texas, will conduct city council regular meeting by video conference at six P M. Actually, now seven P M. now for city council, April sixth, twenty twenty-one, in order to advance public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings in an effort to slow the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. This is an open meeting conducted by video conference. There is no public access to a physical location. Those individuals who have notified City Secretary that they wish to speak or have sent comments to us, we do have those. And at an appropriate time, we'll be calling upon you to make your comments known. Audience, you are in listen-only mode, and those who are registered will be called upon again, as I said, by the City Secretary. For our city council members, as a courtesy, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand in front of your camera so that either I or, or City Secretary can note, can see that or do the raise-your-hand feature that is available in the software that we're using. All votes that we do will be taken by roll call vote by the City Secretary and state if you are for or against their item being voted upon. So we have made a decision, everyone that is joining us for our city council meeting, that we are going to postpone the two executive sessions on the agenda until the end of our meeting so that our citizens that have wanted to participate in tonight's city council meeting may do so without delay. Moving on to our invocation, I would ask our Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Cooks, if you would give us an invocation, please.
Regret to Mayor. Would you join me in a word of prayer? Oh Lord, our God, how we thank you for this day. We thank you for being our Father, our Lord, our Savior, Jesus Christ. We ask all that for your blessings over our city, over our staff, over the Ferguson family, Lord, we pray for their protection. We pray, Father, for your direction as we do the city business, but really your business. So, Lord, give us direction, give us wisdom and knowledge to make sure that we're doing what you have us to do. We love you and we thank you for all you've done. We know you're greater than any pandemic. We know you're greater than any snow, snowstorm. You are God and you are our Lord, and for that we say thank you. It's an enable, Jesus, we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Cooks. If you would now individually say the pledges to the United States flag and the pledge to the state of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you for that. But moving on to item number one on the agenda. It is the city council's decision during the time of elections being held that these reports from the mayor and the city council members is not being publicized, nor are those citizen comments. And I will make a comment about that when we get the citizens' input or by number three. So to our I T. folks that are presenting this on social media, please stop recording at this moment.
So I would like to thank each of you for your assistance with today's events. I believe that it was a very respectful and a beautiful celebration of Paul and his service to the city of Duncanville and public service as a whole. And I'd like to thank our team for helping to pull this together to include Kristin and Alex and all the folks who just helped set this up from the Parks and Recreation Department. Couple of significant announcements. One is Operation Clean Duncanville event is scheduled for April tenth from eight to eight A M. to one P M. As we mentioned earlier, our budget town hall is scheduled for April thirteenth from seven P M. to nine P M. And this is a virtual event to talk about budgeting. Our fire station number one construction, which was a bond project that had been slightly delayed, we have worked with our city attorney and feel that we're ready now to move forward with the public forum, which will be held on April twenty-ninth from seven P M. to nine P M. And as Ms. Christian mentioned earlier, our fire truck pool, which was scheduled for May twenty-second, is coming up. Also want to highlight a couple of projects. East Daniel Dell Road reconstruction project is underway. It has started. We began, I believe, moving forward with it. It was our first street bond project jointly funded by the Water Waste Water C I P. Two point seven million in bond and three point nine million. Construction is between South Main and U S sixty-seven. The contractors pave com started mobilization and other preparation activities on April fifth. There will be lane closures. Will begin on the nineteenth of April at East Daniel Dell, which will be reduced to two lanes of traffic, one in each direction. Construction will last through fall of twenty twenty-two. Residents that used to enter and exit U S sixty-seven at Daniel Dell are encouraged to enter and exit at Main Street at, by the Duncanville Fieldhouse. This will also be available in other sites for those who could not hear this today. I'd also like to highlight our own city secretary, Kristin, who will be receiving the Texas C M A, which is the Municipal Clerk's Achievement of Excellence Award. She was told that she would be receiving that, and I'd like to congratulate her on recognizing the good work that she's done for our city and, and moving forward in her field. Also like to inform council that we started the process of filling our vacancy for our Economic Development Director position. I hope by next week you'll receive a message from me with a more of an update, but we have identified a final candidate and are in the process of doing background screening. And so as soon as that is clear, I will send you name, bio, and all pertinent details on this individual, but I wanted to wait until we've gone through all of our background. But we did conduct interviews. We had some very fine candidates who interviewed for the job and were able to narrow it down to a, a lone finalist for the position. And I, what I can say is this candidate does have ties to the city of Duncanville and actually attended school in Duncanville early in their life. So I think that, a couple of other things just to mention to you, we will have a report at the next council meeting for us to make a decision about our Fourth of July event. I know that word has gone out that there is a planning underway. Yes, there is planning underway, but a decision has not been made. And there are many decisions that we're going to bring back to council from Bart on where and how we move forward and if we move forward with our Fourth of July celebration. And that concludes my report.
Very much, City Manager. Okay, put us back online, I T. I see that we are now live on Facebook once again. Thank you for moving on to item number two on the agenda, proclamations and presentations. Item number two, A. Receive a presentation from McConnell Jones, L L P. on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year Ended September thirty, twenty twenty, including the Independent Auditor's Report.
Mayor, Council, this is Richard Summerlin, Finance Director. So I'll turn this over to Marlon Williams. He was the engagement partner on our audit and let him do this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You have it.
Marlon, you're muted, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. You're good.
Basically, my name is Marlon Williams. I've just introduced myself again. Thank you, Richard, for the introduction. We, we, we at McConnell Jones served as your auditors for the last two years. This is our second year doing the audit. It's our first year doing the audit totally primarily ninety-five percent remotely due to the pandemic. But we met with the Finance Committee about a month ago, a little bit more than a month ago, kind of going over the financial statements in great detail. We're going to just do a, a short presentation to, to kind of do the highlights of, of presentation to you guys. Next slide. So the primary discussion topic is just an overview of the CAFR, what management's responsibilities are, what management's representations that were, what the results for the audit was, as well as cooperation that we did receive from the financial team, as well as some notes for the next year's audit. Next slide. First of all, the city is responsible for preparing the basic financial statements. But those basic financial statements included the government financial statements, the fund-wide financial statements, the proprietary face, as well as the notes to the financial statements. All of those combined with the R S I make up what is known as the CAFR. There are certain limited procedures that we did do on the required supplemental information. They were not audited, but there, but we do formally call an in relation review associated with those. Next slide. Other informations included that we do audit is the combining financial statements. That includes your balance sheet. It includes combining revenues and statements, as well as there are some other un-audited information, such as introductory, as well as some statistical information that kind of breaks down the historical trends of the city. Next slide. From a COVID nineteen standpoint, sales tax and general revenues were just down. That's kind of across the country. We're noticing that. But the city also offset that with some funding that was received from CARES Act funds of about nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars. And then subsequent to the year-end, the city has received an additional one point two six million dollars associated with COVID nineteen. So. Again, as we have said, there are certain responsibilities that are communicated to those charged with governance. First off, management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements, the fair presentation of those financial statements, as well as all of the required supplemental information that goes into those statements. They select the accounting policies. They also establish and maintain internal controls, the compliance with the applicable laws, and all the adjusting and correcting misstatements, so any, any material misstatements that go through the financial statements. So any, any material misstatements that go through the financial statements. Design and implement the programs for controls to present and detect fraud. And they assume all responsibilities with the assistance, provided the assistance throughout the, throughout the audit. So we work directly with management to be able to provide our audit opinion. And by the end of the audit, they provide representations that are made to the auditors related to what they have provided. Next slide. From the audit standpoint, again, our responsibility was to express opinions on the financial statements and all the different opinion units. Based off of procedures that we perform, we provided what is known as an unmodified or clean opinion. Because the city spent more than $750,000 of federal funds, they were subject to a single audit this year, first year in a few years. And there were no, we're pleased to report that there were no findings reported under uniform guidance. We obtained an understanding of the internal controls of the, of, of the city as part of our audit procedures. And there were no material weaknesses or no, and noted during our procedures and testing. For the regards to required supplemental information and the MDA and the changes of, of fund balance, we reviewed those items in relation to the financial statements that were audited. And nothing unusual came to our attention either. Supplemental information that was reviewed were relates to the combining and individual fund statements. And we look at that and we actually audit that in relation to, again, the audit report. A lot of that information, what is subject to audit procedures. And then, as we stated earlier, the, there's the introductory stats, the statistical section that was considered other information that was un-audited. Next slide. And as we stated earlier, there were no control points, which is nice to see in, in this environment, that there was no material weaknesses or significant, significant deficiencies that needed to be reported to those in charge of governance. Next slide. Again, as this was a challenging time to do an audit, but even though management worked real, real well for staff and we encourage no difficulties in dealing with management and completing our audit. We're also pleased to report that there were no disagreements that arose during the course of our audit. And we'd just like to, again, express our appreciation of the financial team and the cooperation throughout the entire audit. Our staff enjoyed working to you, with you guys, and we look forward to serving you guys next year. Next slide, and I think, are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. So I think it's important to underscore that this was a clean audit in terms of accounting practices and how that works. A clean audit is very, very important to anyone in, in terms of government fiscal responsibility. So our kudos go out to Mr. Summerlin, I was Tia Pettis, and the entire accounting staff for coming through this, this CAFR with, with, I would say, a perfect report. Thank you very much for our staff for do, for doing that and for Mr. Williams and his, his other individuals that participated in this audit. Any questions to Mr. Williams from City Councilmember? All right, Mr. Summerlin, thank you very much for all that you do as a Finance Director, you and Tia and the rest of your staff. This is, it's a great moment, actually. From my background experience, coming from an accounting perspective, to know that getting a clean audit and such an important thing is a very, very important point. And our citizens need to be, we are very proud of you and your staff, as our citizens should be as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Moving on to item two B, a proclamation recognizing March 2021 as Women's History Month. Appropriately, Councilmember Jamison, please do the present, the proclamation on this. Thank you.
Well, I'll start out by saying I serve on the board of the Women in Municipal Government. And we did quite a bit of talking about, as you can imagine, talking about women and successful women and women who have been our leaders during this time. Month, March is the month that we celebrate that. And then we had, of course, as you know, the 19th Amendment that was passed by Congress June 4th, 1919, and ratified on August 18th, 1920. And that amendment granted women the right to vote. So, I mean, that's a pretty big deal. And that happened unfortunately during this time of the pandemic. So we didn't really get to have a celebration that we would have. But I have the proclamation here that reads, whereas March is Women's History Month, which commemorates and encourages the study, observance, and celebration of the vital role of women in American history. Whereas Women's History Month has been observed annually during the month of March in the United States since 1987. Whereas throughout our history, women have influenced every facet of American life and culture. Whereas women have been pioneers in the fields of science, medicine, engineering, education, finance, arts, journalism, business, government, and more. Whereas the 2021 theme hashtag choose to challenge is a call to action for people of all gender identities to raise their hands in support and solidarity, sharing images on social media using the hashtag choose to challenge and hashtag IWD, which stands for International Women's Day 2021, to encourage others to stand for a more inclusive world. Whereas during the month of March, we celebrate the contributions of women, I'm sorry, that we celebrate the contributions women have made to our country, states, regions, and cities, and recognize the outstanding achievements women have made over the course of American history. Now, therefore, I Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2021 as Women's History Month. I call upon all Duncanville citizens to observe this month and celebrate women with appropriate program ceremonies and activities. And I also would like to say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem, Mark Cooks, for recognizing me as a woman on the council. Thank you very much.
And we as well, Councilmember Jamison, appreciate your service to our city and for what you do to help us to get a deeper understanding of all things that's necessary for us to govern as a council. It's always wonderful to have you with us and to have your opinions to guide us through things. And to all of the women on our staff in the city, that, the administration of this city, thank you very much for your service and for all that you do. We congratulate you and our deepest thanks and respect. Item number two C, proclamation recognizing March 21, 27, 2021 as Poison Prevention Week. This will be presented by Councilmember Joe Vera Cruz. Mr. Vera Cruz.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation. Whereas our society has become increasingly dependent on household chemicals to perform labor-saving, time-saving miracles and on medicine to provide health-giving, life-sustaining benefits. And whereas these products were not used as intended or directed may be hazardous, particularly if children gain access to them. And whereas over the past 60 years, the nation has been observing Poison Prevention Week to call attention to these hazards and how they, how to properly handle and dispose of them, dispose of these substances. The proper use of safety packaging can help eliminate them. And whereas the efforts of our community organizations, complemented by the efforts of the North Texas Poison Center, have reduced childhood, childhood poisoning in Duncanville, Texas. Oh, I need my glasses. Whereas North Texas Poison Center, the regional poison center located at Parkland Health and Hospital System, provides the ultimate in human service programming and immediate accessible emergency information to save lives of victim of poison-related emergencies. And whereas these programs should continue as long as even one child swallows a household product or medicine by mistake. Now, therefore, I Barry Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 21st through the 20th of 2021 as Poison Prevention Week in the city of Duncanville, Texas. Further, direct the appropriate agencies and our local government to continue their cooperation with concerned citizens and community organizations, including our schools, to develop programs which will alert people to the continued danger of misusing medicines and household products and to promote effective safeguards against accidental poisons amongst our young children. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vera Cruz. Moving on to item number two D, a proclamation and recognition of National Library Week, April 4th through 10th of 2021. I would, I'm going to go ahead and do that proclamation. Whereas libraries are trusted and treasured institutions, fueling efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who guide people to the best information resources, providing not only the facts, but also the expertise and services that add meaning to those facts. And whereas librarians continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, especially as our society is at a critical juncture regarding the changing information landscape and the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. And whereas libraries support democracy and affects social change through their commitment to providing equitable access to information for all. And whereas libraries work to serve all community members, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas libraries provide forums for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better understand each other and ourselves. And whereas libraries are looking beyond their traditional roles, providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new and innovative services that connect closely with the needs of those they serve. And whereas the Duncanville Public Library and its personnel have supported the educational, economic, and cultural interests of our community in these ways and more since 1955. And whereas libraries, library workers and library supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Therefore, I Barry Gordon, Mayor of the City of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 4th through 10th, 2021. And there's all citizens to visit their public library this week, engage with their librarians, and explore the world of possibilities that awaits them there. Thank you very much. And to Julio Velazquez, our librarian, and all of our staff at the library, thank you for all that you do, because as this proclamation says, libraries and the, the use of information is nothing like it was even five or six years ago. Libraries are now a source of information and librarians are experts in the dissemination of information in this digital world. So thank you very much to all that you do. We appreciate you. Moving on to item two E. This is the State of the City video. It, it is on social media. We wanted to go ahead and show it at this particular time so that all the citizens who may not have seen it yet and city council members can have the possibility of viewing it. I do want to mention that this was done over a pretty long period of time. We had some delays because of, of COVID issues and because of the, the snowstorm and other things and editing issues. But Public Information Officer Alex Hamby did a yeoman's work putting this together with our contractor for Tiffany here in the city of Duncanville. And you will note at the very, very end of this, there is a tribute from me to Paul Frederickson. And this was done before Mr. Frederickson's tragic and sudden passing. In, in his viewing it for a presentation, he told Mr. Hamby, get rid of that, take that out of there. I don't want it in there. And Alex politely told him, very sorry, the mayor says it's going to stay. And it is there. So it is, is a tribute and a commemoration to Mr. Frederickson. So go ahead and roll that, please.
Hello, I'm Barry Gordon, Mayor of Duncanville, the city of Champaign. I'm here at the Duncanville Hilton Garden Inn. It's here that the Chamber of Commerce usually holds the annual State of the City banquet, with people gathered together to celebrate the year's accomplishments and to look forward with great optimism. The 2020 State of the City will be as different and as virtual as so much of the year was. On March 13th, 2020, I signed a declaration of local disaster in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, the way our city conducted business changed, but the work continued. Staff were given dual missions in 2020. Continued progress toward the council's vision of becoming a premier in North Texas city, while at the same time responding to the needs of our community during a global health crisis. Assistant Fire Chief Greg Chase is here to tell you more.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. 2020 has been difficult for the Duncanville Fire Department and Emergency Services nationwide. Our department was prepared for the pandemic, though, having had the foresight to obtain the supplies we needed to continue providing safe care for our residents. We worked closely with Dallas County, monitoring the pandemic's impact here in Duncanville, always using that data to inform how we can better perform our duties. We and our regional partners with De Soto and Cedar Hill have staffed special responses from providing a paramedic to screen COVID-19 related calls at our Southwest Regional Dispatch Center to forming a specialized squad to provide that, that response. The pandemic did change how we made contact with our patients, but we will always maintain the same standard of quality care as citizens have come to expect. Jeanette?
Thank you, Chief Chase. Closing the doors to the senior center has allowed us to protect some of the most vulnerable in our community. We then quickly adapted to make sure that the services we provide our seniors remain available, convenient, and most of our space.
And so here at the center, we introduced free curbside meal pickup and added socially distanced events like virtual activities and drive-in bingo.
The library adapted our service to the community by offering curbside pickup and drop-off and adding a new home delivery service. This ensured that our patrons were still able to access library materials as they started to spend more time at home.
That need to stay home took a toll on local businesses. But the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation responded by funding a temporary business retention assistance program with $250,000. The program then presented grants of $1,000 to $10,000 to aid 118 local businesses impacted by the pandemic. Duncanville partnered with Dallas County for CARES Act federal funding that provided much-needed money for both businesses and residents. We also worked with the Duncanville Outreach Ministry to ensure that those in need got help. Mayor Gordon?
Duncanville ISD reacted quickly to ever-changing conditions brought on by the pandemic. In March, they stopped in-person learning and immediately began work on a plan of how to safely and effectively educate our students. Students returned to school on September 8th for virtual learning with the help of the district's technology department. The school district then launched hybrid learning with both in-person and virtual learning, starting October 19th. Throughout the year, difficult decisions had to be made in the interest of public health and safety. City staff, the council, and I agreed to cancel beloved traditions like the Fourth of July Celebration, our Halloween Boobash, and our annual Christmas Parade, as each of these had the potential for bringing large groups together, increasing the spreading of COVID-19. But while 2020 brought with it disappointment, there were some exciting developments for Duncanville. And here's Timothy Hamilton to fill you in.
Last year, Parks and Public Works completed work on the pavilion and parking lot at Lakeside Park. And more recently, new fitness equipment has been installed at Pyburn Park. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Commission awarded Duncanville's Armstrong Park, Kidsville, and Splash Pad Project a non-urban outdoor grant in the amount of $750,000, which will add additional monies for use on Proposition A project.
The city's IT department, in partnership with Charter Spectrum, also launched Wi-Fi in 10 of the city's parks with installation completed in May of 2020. Citizens and guests to city parks who are not Charter Spectrum customers can connect to this service using free Spectrum Wi-Fi ID and enjoy one hour of free access per day with the opportunity to purchase additional access time, starting at $2.95 per hour.
Thank you, Tracy and Timothy. We completed the 2020 census. Despite planned outreach activities being canceled, online campaigns and efforts Despite planned outreach activities being canceled, online campaigns and efforts by the Complete Count Committee yielded an increase in the self-response rate, beating the 2010 census. 73.2% of Duncanville residents responded by mail, phone, or online. This will help our city get much of the needed funding for our schools, emergency services, and more. John?
Thanks, Athena. Public Works completed sidewalk work in Fair Meadows North Subdivision and along Danieldale Road. There was also the installation of ADA ramps in Greenway Estates Subdivision. The completion of the water main replacement projects along West Center, South Alexander, Link Drive, Hyridge Drive, and various locations in the Irwin Keesler Subdivision improved water quality for many Duncanville residents. Each of those projects will be finished with a mill and overlay in 2021, resulting in a much smoother drive.
The deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and many more sent shockwaves that were felt around the world and here at home. Duncanville residents responded with peaceful protests and a prayer vigil, where I was joined by Assistant Police Chief Mark Levigny and Police Chief Robert Brown.
Local reaction to those incidents were both peaceful and constructive, with our community coming together to discuss the important matter of how our police department engages with citizens. I remain proud of our Duncanville officers, their work, and professional interaction with residents.
You know, Chief Brown, you're exactly right. We have a great department, made up of a lot of great people, and we serve a great community. You know, in 2020, the Texas Police Chiefs Association re-recognized the Duncanville Police Department's compliance with the Texas Law Enforcement Agency's best practices. The best practices which were developed by Texas law enforcement professionals assist Duncanville in the efficient and effective delivery of service, the reduction of risk, and the protection of all individual rights.
In June of 2020, council approved an inter-local agreement that allowed Duncanville to receive over $2 million in CARES Act funds for disaster relief assistance. That funding has gone toward improvements that will allow city staff to provide uninterrupted service should something like this pandemic hit us again. Duncanville City Council also approved both a balanced budget that will maintain the high level of service our citizens have come to expect, and we also put in a tax cut of just over two and a half cents. I will add that despite the economic impact of COVID-19 on our structure and our businesses here in our city, we maintain a strong financial position of responsibility with our budget, and the city itself is in a very strong position, as evidenced by our continued holding of a double-A bond rating. I also want to take this time to express the gratitude and thanks of the entire city council to Mr. Paul Fredrickson, our Assistant City Manager, who was appointed as interim city manager while the council searched for a new individual. He and the entire staff of our city stepped up and did an incredible job of facing unprecedented issues during the COVID-19 pandemic. Our greatest thanks for all that they have done.
In 2020, our city faced unprecedented challenges that everyone, our police officers, firefighters, staff, community partners, and Duncanville residents faced with both hard determination and the greatest compassion. In the coming weeks, more and more Americans will receive the vaccine, trying to bring it into this pandemic. Life will hopefully return to the normal, and our community will come together again to enjoy those familiar traditions very soon. Your city council and I appreciate the opportunity to serve in normal times, but are truly honored to be here to do the hard work during challenging times like we all just lived through. So, it is with the greatest optimism and joy that I look forward to 2021. Thank you. God bless you, God bless America, and God bless Duncanville, our City of Champions.
My thanks to Public Information Officer Alex Hamby for putting that all together and then working with our local contractor Tiffany. My goodness, her last name escapes me, it's Tiffany.
Wyatt.
Wyatt, yes, thank you very much, Mark. Very fine job, very fine job, thank you to all. Moving on to item number three, citizens' input. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from delivering any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda items may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing or subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. And there are two that need to be mentioned. First of all, we have two individuals, we have four comments, two I will read that at their individual's request. Two individuals have desired to actually address council through the virtual mode. Those individuals are limited to two minutes, and city secretary will be timing now. So, also, once again, the council has the policy in effect that during the time of elections, that the citizens' comments will be muted. So, if that would go ahead and be done, let me know when we're able to proceed, city secretary. Okay, item number four, consent agenda.
Item, sorry, 4A, consider the minutes for March 2020 city council regular meeting. Sorry, IT just told me to stop, hold on. Mr. McBurnett has his hand up. You're muted.
No comment at this time, thank you.
Okay, I see we're back on Facebook, so I'm gonna start over. Item 4A, consider the minutes for the March 2nd, 2020 city council regular meeting. 4B, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of professional engineering services contract number 21-009 for engineering design services for the Cherry Street and Center Street alley from Alexander Avenue to Cockrell Hill Road Alley Reconstruction Project with IEA Inc. and the proposed amount of $58,181.25. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the incorporation of amendment number three, renewal number three, to professional service agreement PSA-20-051 to Dow Clay Corporation DBA Master Plan in the amount of $10,000 for planning consultant services for the revised total contract amount of $59,500. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing the final contract renewal amendment for micro-surfacing pavement treatment services from Viking Construction Inc. through the City of Grand Prairie IFB Number 17041 for the unit prices bid for an estimated expenditure amount of $510,642.59. 4E, consider a resolution awarding invitation to bid IFB 21-0011 Dual Tube Night Vision Goggles with Helmet Mounts to Tactical Night Vision Company Inc. through the city's competitive bid process with an estimated expenditure amount up to $75,000. 4F, consider a resolution authorizing a cooperative purchase of athletic supplies and equipment from BSN Sports LLC using the buy board contract number 583-19 and 592-19 in the amount up to $75,000.
Thank you, city secretary. Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve, Mayor. Mr. McBurnett, approve, a second. Mr. Vera Cruz, a second. City secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember McBurnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against? You're muted, but I saw it, for. At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against? You're muted, but I saw it, he's for. And Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For. Motion is approved, thank you. Moving on to items number five, item for individual consideration. Item 5A, conduct a public hearing 2021-05, consider an ordinance to revoke a special-use permit for a Dallas County government center. Prens ordinance number 765, close prens and retain the existing neighborhood office, quotes NO zoning district on Track 35, Anderson Sladeback survey, abstract number 1299, approximately 1.964 acres, more commonly known as 100 East Wheatland Road, Duncanville. In terms of how this process is going to go, interim city planner Andrew Ruig will present the item, then I will open it for public comment, for a public, I'm sorry, not public comment, but for a public hearing. So, Mr. Ruig, the floor is yours for your presentation, please.
Mayor Gordon, this is Greg. Just before Andrew gets started, I did want to take this opportunity to formally introduce our new city planner, Sky Thibodeau, who is on this call with us tonight. This will be Andrew Ruig's last presentation to council. He's been serving as our interim city planner over the last year. These two items were the last two items that he worked as our interim city planner. So, again, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new planner at the same time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramey, Mr. Ruig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. This is a public hearing item number 202105 on 100 East Wheatland Road, next slide, please. And this is a request to rescind an SUP of a Dallas County government center to retain the existing NO Neighborhood Office Zoning District of the city of Duncanville. So, this is city-owned property, and I'll kind of be explaining the process of how this SUP recension has happened. I also wanted to note on this case was, the process for this zoning case was started prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance update, which council adopted on March 2nd. So, for the purposes of our zoning districts, I'll reference both the previous zoning district and the new zoning district in my presentation. There won't necessarily be many changes to that, but I did want to make that note, as that is how we presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, essentially what would happen in this request is we would request to revoke a specific use permit to allow the property to go back to what was the NO Neighborhood Office District, what is now the NOR Neighborhood Office Retail District, is that's the zoning district that was called forward in the zoning ordinance update. Next slide, please. The area of request is just south of city hall, and this is labeled as the area of the former Dallas County office building. Next slide. Here's the aerial of the request, next slide, please. Here is the old zoning map, so this highlighted the SUP ordinance number 765 and 1715 reflected as the neighborhood office district from the previous zoning district or zoning map. Next slide, please. And for your reference, this is the new zoning map, so, you know, we looked at this request under the lens of the old zoning district, but assuming that the SUP would be rescinded, the new zoning district would apply, which would be the NOR district. Next slide. The subject property is located near to opportunity areas, opportunity area number nine and number 10. Excuse me, the, these opportunity areas are the Main Street District and the Downtown District, and they envision some high-quality commercial, particularly restaurants in the Main Street District, and envision the opportunity to form a commercial hub of activity that we see in some parts of the Downtown District. So, revoking this SUP is compatible with the comprehensive plan, would enhance these, enhance the property availability for future use near to opportunity areas in the city. Next slide. So, just to give you all a background on kind of what went on with this site, you're all sure familiar with it from an earlier council meeting, but essentially, the subject site was conveyed to the city of Duncanville from Dallas County through a court order determining the applicability of existing deed restrictions on the site. So, there's, there were deed restrictions in place for the Dallas County building that essentially stated that when the, when Dallas County no longer had a use for the property, that it was to be conveyed back to the city of Duncanville. So, that determination was made back in December of last year, that the Dallas County no longer had use for the facility, and that was, I believe, voted on by resolution to accept that conveyance by the Duncanville City Council. So, like I said before, this property has a base zoning of NO and NOR with the old and new zoning districts, and this SUP recension would essentially remove the SUP designation from our zoning map, and the property would revert back to the base zoning district, which would now be the NOR Neighborhood Office and Retail District. Next slide. Twelve notices were sent out for this public hearing, and as of this, or as of today, no responses have been received. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted in favor of the request by a vote of six to zero. Next slide. And the recommendation from P&amp;Z was for approval of the revocation of a SUP for a Dallas County government center to retain the Neighborhood Office Retail Zoning District on the site. Next slide. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have, thank you.
Mr. Ruig, fundamentally, what we're doing is just updating the SUP to the new ordinances as passed by city council, correct?
Correct, yeah, so it'd be rescinding the existing SUP, and that would leave the Neighborhood Office Retail as the zoning district for future development.
Right, very good, okay. Okay, this is an item for public hearing, and the process for this is, as we've had public hearings in the past, that there's 10 minutes going to be allocated for individuals who wish to speak in favor, and another 10 minutes allocated for individuals who wish to oppose it. So, city's secretary will be timing the opening and closing of these two separate abilities to address city council. So, we're going to open the first public hearing, the first public hearing will open at 8:07, and this is for those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this particular item.
If you are an attendee, and if you are on the phone, can you please press star nine to raise your hand if you would like to talk? If you are on your computer, if you could use your raise the hand function if you would like to talk? And we'll wait a little bit. I see no hands are raised.
Seeing no hands, the chair will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Councilman.
All in, roll call vote to close the affirmative portion of the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Councilmember McBurnett, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson, for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks, for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison, for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey, for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for or against?
For, thank you. The public hearing in favor is now closed, thank you for that vote. We're now going to open the public hearing for those opposed. Timestamp on this is 8:09 PM. Ms. Downs?
Okay, if you are opposed, could you please do star nine if you're on your phone to raise your hand? If you're on the computer, please use your raise the hand option provided by Zoom if you would like to speak unopposed. There are no hands raised.
Thank you, seeing none. Chair will entertain a motion to close the opposed portion of the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Thank you for that. Roll call vote, city secretary, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz, for or against?
For.
Council- Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison for or against?
For.
At large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For, thank you. The motion to close the opposed portion of the public hearing is at eight ten. Thank you for that. Now going to uh open this item up to comments from council. Do any council members have any comments they wish to say? Thank you. Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve this item.
To approve.
Second.
All right, uh uh motion by Councilmember Jameson, second by Councilmember Mac Burnett. Roll call vote, please. City Secretary.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
May, uh Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison for or against?
For.
At large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For, thank you, City Council. Item five A is approved unanimously. Looping on to item number five B, conduct appearing, a public hearing twenty twenty one dash zero two and consider an ordinance to amend the existing. Special use zoning to include a special use permit S U P for auto dealers. Used cars only perenns pre-owned auto dealership, closed perenns. On central business area, section three, lot five R, block one, approximately five point nine nine four acres. More commonly known as six eleven East Interstate Highway twenty in Duncanville. Again, this Mr. Ruig, Mr. Ruig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing twenty twenty one oh two on six eleven East Highway. Or sorry, East Interstate Highway twenty. Uh next slide, please. Uh so this is a uh a request of Jim Harden of Jacobs and Associate. Uh as the applicant representative owner is Duncanville L L C. Uh the current, there, there is a current S U P on the property. Uh for a pre-owned uh car dealership. Uh which requires that the dealership operate as a branded Nissan facility selling certified pre-owned vehicles. Uh this request is to amend that existing S U P to allow. Uh any used car dealership and remove this branding uh condition from the previous S U P request. Uh and also to amend the uh site plan, which I'll be talking to uh later on in the presentation. Um and also just wanted to note, uh this is, these will be the only, uh this case and the previous case are the only two cases where we'll have. Uh this designation of a case that was submitted with the. Old zoning ordinance in effect and then had the new zoning ordinance passed uh in the middle of the process. So I did want to note that. Um the, the old zoning district that this S U P was on is the G R General Retail District. That's called forward to the G O R General Office Retail District, uh which does have different. Um allowable uses in those districts I'll speak, speak to here in the presentation. Uh next slide, please. Uh here is the area of request just north of Interstate Highway twenty uh fronting the twenty uh Interstate Highway twenty service road. This is on the. Uh northeast uh portion of Duncanville. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial of the request. You can see the um. Uh the, the existing used car dealership, uh you know, at an earlier date, uh it's currently not uh in operation. Um adjacent to single family to the north, a uh hotel uh used to the east and a new car dealership further to the east. Uh next slide, please. Uh as you can see here, here's the old uh zoning map designation. So this uh is an existing S U P ordinance twenty one eighty nine. Um next to uh what, what the underlying zoning is, the G R uh General Retail Zoning District and then another. Uh S U uh for a new car dealership as part of our old zoning map. Next slide, please. What this looks like uh under our new regulations is the same um S U P designations across the properties. Next slide, please. Uh with the, the subject property is located in the uh opportunity area number seven. Uh so that opportunity area includes those three properties that are um between the single family. Residential to the north and the um Interstate Highway twenty frontage road. So opportunity number, opportunity area number seven. Uh envisions the, this, this area is having two primary land use components. Uh either high quality interstate highway, commercial development or mixed use neighborhood. Retail, commercial development to transition between uh those existing neighborhoods and the uh freeway commercial area fronting Interstate Highway twenty. So staff has looked at this in uh with the uh comprehensive plan and opportunity area number seven. And uh has determined that this is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Um for the long-term vision. However, uh this requested S U P does allow a, a vacant property to be occupied. Um so there's a, a long-term vision and a, a short-term vision that we wanted to bring to your attention when um. Uh reviewing this request. Next slide, please. So as part of the project scope, the applicant is seeking approval to amend the existing S U P for auto dealers. Used cars only uh to occupy and improve two of the three existing structures. For auto showroom and display office and service bays in conjunction with the uh auto dealership use. So the proposed site plan that would be part of this new S U P request. Uh shows a removal of one of the existing structures, which would be replaced with. Additional parking and outdoor display areas for the dealership. Uh the applicant has proposed hours of operation Monday through Friday, ten A M. to seven P M. Saturday, nine A M. to seven P M. And the uh proposed uh or the, the operator would propose to employ between sixteen and twenty. Employees at the full operation. Next slide, please. Uh to give you some background on some, how this uh relates to some of the zoning requirements. Uh the zoning ordinance requires one space for each five hundred square feet of sales floor for indoor uses and one space. Uh for each one thousand square feet of lot area for storage, sales and parking areas. Uh for your reference, this parking requirement has not changed from the old zoning code to the new zoning code. Um based on the proposed site plan, twenty nine, or sorry, two hundred and ninety spaces. Uh would be required based on their um proposed square, square footage uh areas and um. The provided parking would be five hundred and seventy six spaces. Next slide, please. Uh the applicant is proposing to uh repair and renovate uh the two, two of the existing structures that they proposed to keep as part of their. S U P request. It also proposed to um in renovate the parking area and the pole mounted sign. I have a conceptual elevation uh coming up to see what uh that may look like. Um also with this S U P request, they, the, the applicant would be required to comply with. The landscaping string offering requirements of the new zoning ordinance. And the signage requirements in our um chapter sixteen A sign guidelines. So one thing that I want to note to you all. Is uh with this S U P, looking under it through the lens of the old zoning ordinance. Uh that process would, would then, when they go to submit their building permit. We would then look at it under the lens of the new zoning ordinance, which would require. Um that they come into compliance, you know, bring it up to code with the new zoning ordinance requirements for. Section seven and section eight. So I did want to, want to note that for you all. Next slide, please. Uh for surrounding land uses, like I mentioned before, this property is surrounded by single family to the, to the uh si- single family uses to the north. Hotel used to the east and Interstate Highway to the south and west. Uh this uh property, like I said before, is also in the vicinity of a new car sales with incidental U car, car sales use. Uh further to the uh east of the site, also a part of opportunity area number seven. Next slide. Uh for the future land use, this S U P is being requested to comply with. Um article thirteen of the zoning ordinance and that's, the, these are the same um. Requirements that uh we, we, we look at when we look at an S U P request. It's section five of the new zoning code for your reference. Um and the, you know, the request is to allow for the amendment to the auto dealers, used cars only. Uh pre-owned auto ship dealership use in the G R General Retail's this district, which would then become G O R. Uh looking at it through the new code. Um and the appropriateness of this use must also be evaluated on whether the site can accommodate all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So those are. Um those, the, the S U P conditions that you all look at. Um you know, those have not changed throughout the zoning ordinance update. So it's still determining, you know, whether this use is. Appropriate for this area and if, if any additional conditions should be uh. Uh request, or I guess uh implemented in the new S U P ordinance. Uh so an S U P can be issued for an unlimited or a limited period of time. That's uh one of the tools that you all can use. Uh for the S U P ordinance. Uh next slide, please. And uh just to kind of give you a reminder, every S U P special use permit shall be considered. An amendment to the zoning district applicable to such property and sh- shall authorize the special use. In addition to the uses permitted by right in the district. So like I said before, council may impose. Additional conditions that must be complied with by the grantee before they can go to the. Certificate of occupancy and building permit uh section. So they'll still be. Subject to the uh zoning ordinance requirements, but if there are, you know. Uh additional items that you may all want to require, that's, this is the opportunity um to, to do, to do that. Uh next slide. Here's the um proposed site plan. So. Uh two, two buildings that are existing today, you can kind of see in the middle of the site is the, is the primary building, which would host um. The office showroom and the service bays. We have an additional building to the uh that would remain. Further to the um east of the site. Uh which would also serve as those showroom bays uh for another structure. And then there uh was a building that's, uh I guess I don't have it noted on this plan, but. Uh the building that would be removed from the old site plan is directly to the west of the main structure. And that would be proposed to be replaced with additional parking areas and showroom area, outdoor showroom areas. Next slide, please. Here's the floor plan for the uh main building. So as you can see. This is for the uh office, display, showroom and service bays for the proposed uh used car dealership. Next slide. And here is a conceptual elevation with um the proposed improvements that the applicant has stated that they uh intend to do, which includes. Um re, re uh renovating the, 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 the two structures, improving the pole sign. And uh resurfacing some of the pavement to bring it up to code. Next, next slide. Uh for as far as notification, legal notification was posted in the Focus Daily News and posted outside of City Hall. Thirty-nine notices were sent out for this public hearing. As of today, one response has been received in favor and one response has been received in opposition. Next slide. Here's the uh notification uh boundaries. So property owners within this boundary. Um were mailed the notice. The primary notification areas are the single family. Uh residences, residences to the north of the site on Ren Avenue. Next slide. Uh the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero in favor of the request. Next slide. And uh as part of that recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh to amend the S U P, uh Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended the following conditions. Uh that the property shall be developed in accordance with the site plan, which was uh the plan that we saw earlier and be incorporated into this ordinance. The property shall meet all city, state, federal regulations and built, for building and fire codes and accessibility. Civil plans be submitted, uh designed and submitted by a licensed engineer and approved by the city engineer for the city of Duncanville standards. Uh they've included the proposed hours of operation as part of the S U P conditions. And P and Z has recommended that the S U P uh shall terminate upon closure of the operation or a change of the use uh to another use. Uh next slide. And with that, uh thank you for uh listening to my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Mr. Ruig. We're going to go to the public hearing and any questions afterwards will maybe be coming to you. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing with the processes I stated earlier, going to have ten minutes. Provided for the individuals who wish to make comments. Yeah, in favor of the S U P and then we will have ten minutes for individuals who wish to make comments opposed to this S U P. So opening the, the public hearing for comments in favor of the timestamp on that is eight twenty-five. City Secretary.
All right, if you would like to speak during the public hearing in favor, please use the Zoom option to raise your hand. If you're on the telephone, that's star nine. Looks like we have no hands raised.
Seeing that there is uh no hands raised to speak in, in favor, uh we need a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Councilor Mac Burnett, a second.
Second.
Uh Pro Tim, uh Mayor Cooks. Set roll call vote, please. City Secretary.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison for or against?
For.
At large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For, uh thank you. By unanimous vote, this portion of public hearing in favor of the motion is closed at eight twenty-six P M. Now open the portion of the public hearing in opposition to the motion. Or into the item itself. Uh that would be at eight twenty-six as well. City Secretary.
If you would like to speak opposed on the item, please raise your hand. Okay, we have one hand raised. And also, if you are on the phone, press star nine. I T, can you please let Miss Angela Jones in so she can speak?
So council, um I'm not so much opposed as I just have a question. Uh did, did we entertain any other type of businesses in, in that spot? Uh did we look at any other economic, economic development opportunities other than dealership? And I don't know who can answer that, but uh tha- that would be my, my question.
I, I believe um I can, I can speak to that as the uh interim city planner. Uh this, this request was um made in order to. Permit a, permit the, the used car dealership use uh with amended conditions. So this is a use that had a previous S U P that was granted. Uh that remains on the property. Um so this would essentially be to amend the conditions to bring back that use. Uh so this is, this request itself is just limited to this, this one use uh for the, for the property.
Okay, thanks for that clarity. Um I just have, I guess one other further comment is that uh what I thought once that dealership left, we were looking to repurpose that space for something that was um. That would be more for citizen use. Uh I thought there was going to be something on what could potentially go there. That being said, um now understand that we're just maintaining or keeping it the same. S U P. So I haven't put no other further comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any other individuals? City Secretary.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, uh the chair will entertain a motion to close this.
Clarification. I always got a, I want to clarify something. That, that use is not the same. The use that's currently there has got new car with used cars. It's not a use. This is a different, this is a big difference. Just want to clarify something. There's a big difference what they're asking for.
Right.
I'm just wanting to clarify that. The planner said it wasn't different. I just want to make sure we're on the, we're getting that right.
Right, the, the use, the use is still for a used car dealership. Um.
On brand.
Correct, it wouldn't. So the, the existing S U P. Has a branding requirements that say, you know, this shall operate as a branded Nissan facility selling certified pre-owned vis- vehicles. And has other uh conditions related, speci- related to the Nissan. Use and Nissan dealership program. So the use uh is still the same. So the use is still the same all ships, used cars only. Pre-owned auto dealership is the full title of the use. And they are requesting an amendment to that to remove the branding and to revise the site plan.
Those comments can be further addressed if you wish for city council after we close the public hearing. So the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing in the opposition portion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close by Mr. Cooks, second by Councilmember Mac Burnett. City roll call closed, please, from city secretary.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jamison for or against?
For.
At large, councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
And Mayor Gordon for or against?
For. Thank you, council. We are closing the opposition portion of the public hearing. Timestamp is eight thirty. We're now open this up to discussion, comments by city council members. Mr. Anderson, did you wish to continue with your comment?
No, I just want to make sure that we understand that it is changed and it is, you know, in my opinion, it's a big change going from a nationally branded. Dealership to the kind of dealerships that we see deteriorating three ways all around our communities. So that's a big difference.
And, you know, to that point as well, the one point that Mr. Ruig did make in the presentation is this is. It is not in conformance with what we as a council desire for for this land in the comprehensive plan. However, there's an upside and the downside. That downside is is that we're not getting that conformance of what we'd like to see this land used for. Optimally, however, the upside is that rather than being a vacant piece of land, it is going to be occupied. And that's a major step forward for us. Now, as as it does say in the S U P, at any point in time that this particular operation ceases. Or the business has changed, that this S U P is revoked. So that's important for us as a council to consider when we're putting all this to perspective.
Two other things I want to, I want to bring up. So I remember when the Ford dealership, you know, that's now the Dodge dealership, used to be Red Bird Ford, I think, I believe is what it was. And a lot of used car dealers tried to come in there for a long time and then finally we got a brand new Dodge dealership there. You know, because we didn't take those 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 other dealerships. You know, and then if we're going to do this at all, then we, can we put a time limit on it? I mean, a real time limit limit on it. Can we put three years on it or five years or something at least? So I'm for getting buildings vacant, occupied. But to have this is forever, as long as it doesn't change use, what what you're asking for right now is as long as it doesn't change use. It can go from used car dealer to used car dealer to used car dealer, be traded to many different people. Can we also limit that if it's trade, if it trades, you know, if it trades hands, can it go back? Not just if it trade, if it changes uses, and I don't know if that's, but those are some of the things that may, you know, I. Getting it occupied short term is one thing, having it be a used car dealership forever over there is another. So, you know. Personally, I'd rather not see it be a used car dealership, but you know, I don't like seeing an empty building either, so.
We have council Jamison, who had her hand raised first, then Mayor Pro Tim Cooks, then at large councilmember Harvey.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to address. I think I I attended that P and Z meeting and I heard it. And we can limit the S U P as far as. And I would like to see that for the person who is requesting it now. For their use, but not to hand it off to another used car dealership if they wanted to. And I think they discussed that and was that not approved also? That they could continue to, as long as it was a used car dealership, didn't the P and Z approve that? Andrew?
Yeah, I believe that the the intent was the that upon closure of the operation that the the S U P would terminate. Was the intent that we heard from P and Z and that was reflected in this. This recommendation that that you're seeing on the that we spoke to on the presentation.
Oh, I thought that they had said that as long as they sold it to another used car dealership, they could keep the S U P. And I that I would not like to see. So I think that's what they said and. I would not be for that. I think that we ought to have. You know, like whatever we want to do, three years, four years, whatever. And as long as they are the owners of it and are occupying it, not to continue to. Pass it on to the next used car dealership. If one came in and they wanted to leave. So we had to tie it to the owner, not to, are they buying this piece of property?
Mayor. Of the owner of the property, Mr. Henry Wright is actually online if you'd like for him to speak or answer questions.
Well, is he the one buying it or is he the one that currently owns it? Or are they?
Owner's rep, he's the owner's rep. So I think he actually sent a message to all of us, but he's available to answer questions. I receive, I see he sent a message in chat, but I also received from Mr. Ramy that he's available for any questions council may have of what he's doing with the property.
Okay, I understand that Clay Cooley owned it before. So. I'm sorry, what's his name?
Mr. Henry Wright.
Mr. Henry Wright, okay. Oh, and is David Gunn here also?
Yes, or is David Gunn is the representative for Clay Cooley, K Cooley also.
Okay.
So he's responding to your questions in the text, but we probably, well, everyone can see it who's not on the chat. Have him to say if he's interested in that, the council.
So Henry Wright is buying it from Clay Cooley, correct?
Councilmember, this is David Gwen. I represent Clay Cooley. Hank Wright represents Rich Jackson, who is the tenant that is going to be leasing the property from Clay Cooley. And as part of that lease, the ownership has plans and it's struck in the deal that they're going to be spending. You know, north of one point two million dollars on improvements in that property to bring it up to a very nice and. Very nice use for the property.
Look like Cooley will continue to own it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, well, that answers one thing. And so how are we going to do that? If we tie the S U P to the owner, we tie it to Clay Cooley? Or should we tie it to the? Lee Sor.
Mayor, what I would recommend is we put a time on it so that we get to revisit it. I think someone said four years or five years. Let's just tie it to that. The council could always at any time revoke an S U P on their own motion through P and Z. So we just have to be vigilant. And making sure if it does change hands or the business closes is to be getting that process, if I'm hearing the council correctly.
I did like the. What the new dealership wanted to do as far as clearing the property and cleaning it up. And I think that's a positive, a good thing. And we'll just have to see.
Councilmember, could I respectfully ask one more question? As part of that lease deal, it is a ten-year lease. That's kind of what went into the economics of ownership, being willing to provide. That turn key allowance to turn the property into the condition that's been proposed to council today. Respectfully, I would ask if there's any change of ownership throughout that time. That we would revisit after three to four years. But respectfully, you know, I would like to ask just as the listing agent who's had this property for two years. And tried very hard to sell it to higher and better use developers. We actually worked with the city of Duncanville. Pre-COVID and we've had many break-ins. We have to have armed security out there at night. I think that respectfully, if, you know, if we could grant, if the use stays the same and the tenant stays the same. The only reason the economics of this deal makes sense for us to spend that much money is because it's a ten-year commitment from the tenant. And if we do not change, if the property ownership does not change hands, if the tenant does not cease operations. Respectfully, that's what we request. And this is my first time to do this, so thank you for letting me talk.
Oh, well, this is my district. So I hear from the residents that live in back.
Yes, ma'am.
The dealerships and so we obviously would appreciate. Clean and neat and quiet and no trash and no, no crime. And all those things, we're with you. We. And look forward to having a good business there. And I don't have a problem with tying it to the particular owner. I just don't want it hand the S U P special use permit handed off to.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone else.
So, Mr. Hager, you know, these, the comments by councilmember Jamison have great merit. In terms of how we. Couch the any conditions the council may put on this S U P. The language that it presently has, can you, can we go back to what that language would show on the S U P now? I know it was generalized.
Go back, go back mayor to the conditions and if you could put up the conditions.
It should be, okay, yeah, that's slide.
It said the S U P shall terminate upon closure of the operation or change of use. Ms. Jamison has suggested change of ownership.
Change of ownership to be added to that.
And just so the council understands, if the C O is looked to be transferred. How that would operate is we would report that back to the council and then the council would have to instigate a revocation of the S U P. That's the process if you add that on.
Now, also, rather than just change of ownership, ownership remains as we understanding it from from Mr. Gwen. As the ownership remains with Clay Cooley, instead of change of ownership, it ought to be change of, what is it, less C or less R? Which is it?
Well, the the C O would change, man. Yeah, the C O would change. If if the less C changes, then the C O doesn't get passed on, a new C O would have to be issued.
So the. All right, so the addition to this last bullet would then be what, Bob? S U P shall turn upon closure of operation.
Operations, change your use or change of certificate of occupancy.
There it is, okay.
And they said something in the meeting about lighting in the back. Do you remember that? And so where is that written, Andrew?
Yeah, so the the lighting, when they go in, assuming that, well, if this S U P were to be approved. When the applicant goes in to get their building permits and certificate of occupancy, they'll be. Subject to the new zoning ordinance regulations, which have lighting standards included that they'll be required to comply with.
Okay, so you're saying it's tied to the new zoning standards, not to this specific. A piece of property because they were talking about, because there's a long, long piece of property. And at times trash can accumulate and things like that in the back. And. We don't want that. We want it picked up and clean and we want lighting so we don't have people walking down there doing things they shouldn't. Whatever.
Right, so yeah, they'll be required to comply with, you know, the screening standards, landscaping and lighting standards of the new ordinance. When they go in to get their building permit and C O for, you know, the C O for the new tenant. And the building permit to renovate the structures.
Okay, I I just wasn't sure where that was written, because I don't recall when we did that about lighting and. On the dealership.
Yeah, it's not tied to the dealership necessarily. It's tied to the commercial lighting standards. That there can only be so many candlelight at the property line. So that regulation you passed with the new zoning ordinance. And so since the use would go forward to license, if you will, with a C O and the building permit. Those regulations would apply to this tenant.
But you're saying it just the opposite. You're saying so, just so many candlelight. And I think what they were talking about was to have it well lit so there it wouldn't. Not to interfere with the houses behind them, but.
Yeah, the.
Be enough.
The lighting standards, if you recall, under our new zoning ordinance, the candle lights are down, they're down facing. So they light the facility with adequate lighting, but that lighting doesn't bleed off into the neighborhood. So there'll be adequate lighting for the site itself. It just won't bleed off into the neighborhood that's to the north.
Okay.
Because of the shielding and the downward trajectory of the lighting elements under the new ordinance.
Okay, we just, we just want peace, Mr. Wright. With our neighborhood.
I thought we wanted the comp plan. I thought we wanted to follow the comp plan and stuff, which we made such a big deal, you know. I wonder why we even, you know.
The the problem with this, so you understand the problem with this piece of land that the is the automobile use continues on the property at this stage. And you don't have an application to revoke an S U P to allow automobile dealership. This is the applicant's request is to amend their current S U P to remove the branding and then to improve the site. That's what's before you. So I understand your comment, though, is it prolongs that use at this location.
But as Mr. Hager stated, at any point in time, the city council desires to revoke that for whatever purpose, we have the opportunity to do so. We can.
Good luck, good luck with that.
Yes, sir.
Good luck with that.
Up in now?
Mr. Cooks.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. First of all, let me thank the the owners for submitting their thought on this S U P. To come into the council to ask about S U P. I have several, several concerns with even changing this S U P. Number one, if we continue to accept what people, what anybody brings us. We will, we never get what the citizen is asking of us to do. This brings no value to the citizens or to our city. This is in a high opportunity zone. I think opportunity seven, I think I saw, is prime property offer I twenty. And just because the property has been vacant for a while, doesn't mean we jump on and make another car dealership. We have enough new car dealerships right down the way in Dallas. We need, we need New Yorkers in Duncanville to my knowledge. It doesn't, it doesn't even mean our comprehensive plan. And we've invested in two things. We've invested in a comprehensive plan from citizens who said, here's what we're looking for. We invested now in a planning and zoning update. And so because this company is bringing us this, this change to S U P. I think that was the whole purpose of of us up, that was the whole purpose of us. Going back and looking at planning and zoning where we can limit these types of S U P. Again, it brings no value. It doesn't, it doesn't mean our complaint. Now, because I've talked about the things that it will not bring, I need to share what I think you can bring. And that is, if you had a corporate office that you wanted to bring and locate there, that would be great. If you want to include a restaurant with a corporate office, that meets what we're looking for in a comprehensive plan. Not changing our S U P to get another car dealership. We, I don't think I said it needs another, another dealership and take away what I think, what 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 we need. Go back to our comprehensive plan. It has nothing saying that we need. Go back to our comprehensive plan. It has nothing saying that we need another car dealership. And we're accepting that if we accept this SUP, the change of SUP. So, I'm totally not in favor of changing this SUP and looking for other opportunities for the owner to find another. Owner who would like to do what our citizens are asking for and is not a car dealership.
Mr. Harvey, and Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to register my displeasure because my hand was raised several moments ago and the city secretary acknowledged the order of speaking. But Monty Anderson jumped right in ahead of me. So, let me just say that. These are hard times and people need vehicles. And so, maybe they can't afford a new vehicle. Maybe that's all they can afford is a used vehicle. Does that make them any less of a person? And the other thing is, it's great to have these ideas. But at the end of the day, the ideas have to face reality. And reality is that this is an investor's market. And investors very much dictate what goes where. And so, we have other parcels of land. That are virgin, undeveloped. And so, I'd say with those parcels of land, let's hold out for the highest and best usage. So, another thing I'm concerned about is that we already have the reputation that we're bad for business. And so, for us to get on this public media and badmouth. A person that's trying to invest money in this community, what message does that send to other potential investors? So, to me, this smacks of elitism. To me, this smacks of anti-business. And I think given the loss of the Fords and consideration of homestead exemption, we keep subtracting, subtracting, subtracting. But yet, we still have this pressure exerted by the citizens. To give them high quality services. And that's an issue that needs to be addressed. So, let's be pragmatic. Let's be realistic. And give this opportunity an honest and unbiased hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
I have one more comment really quick, Mayor. And, and I have a really have a question for the city manager. Would you share with us what value a dealership will bring to us in forms of tax revenue?
Well, I, I, I would start with saying that I would ask our finance director, but one of the things that happens. A lot of cities across the country is the sales tax from car sales do no longer go to the city. I believe what we receive is in the form of property tax. And if they're doing construction, there would be permit fees, but that's a one-time fee. Mr. Richard Summerlin, would you have some more to add to that?
Yes, I would. What you said is absolutely right. The, the sales tax generation from a car dealership is. Almost nothing. Everything goes to the state basically on, on sales of cars. The, the only benefit it would have to the city would be an increase in the property value from the improvements. And so, your property tax from the, the enhancements is the, the only real benefit that the city would see.
So, I thank you for clearing it. I wanted to make sure that I was correct on that. And I don't think it's saying that we are not business friendly because Lord knows I'm definitely business friendly. But at the same, talk, at the same time talking about business friendly, that doesn't mean that we accept what does not fit in a comprehensive plan. And with this market that we're looking for now, we would hope that this market would turn around like the housing market right now. Where you can't sell or buy a, find a house. We hope that comes to us. And if we market properly, correctly. Especially when we talk about across the street from that, when we find a great developer to do one thing across the street. What's not to say that that great developer will not come across the street and do something fantastic as well. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Okay, and I want to comment on that. Notwithstanding what has been said, every little bit helps. And in baseball, you don't have to come up and knock up a home run just to score runs. You could hit a single. So, let's hit some singles and eventually we'll score.
Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to add, nobody's brought up that it bring, it is bringing jobs as well. So, that is another benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I want to see if we can bring this to a conclusion. And my personal comments are that we have had this facility derelict and languishing in our city for well over two years. It's been an eyesore and a detriment to our city. And I agree with Councilmember Harvey that the realistic and prismatic, pragmatic approach to this. Is that for the short term, we need to exercise the authority to bring a business to this property. And to do so will be to the benefit of our city from the property tax evaluations and the property improvements being made. And as Mr. McNabb says, the addition of jobs. Yes, it's not, it's not the ultimate. In terms of what we would like to have, we recognize that already. Mr. Ruig completely put that in black and white to us. It is not in conformance with the comp plan. We know that. We recognize that. But at the same time, the realistic and pragmatic approach to this is we need to do what we can to repurpose our buildings to not have any more derelict buildings. And we are going to heavily rely on Clay Cooley and the occupants of this building to make it a showplace. For what it is. It's not, let's not call it just used cars. Let's call it a, a business. That can bring affordability and bring income to our city and service to our residents.
It's free on the flowers.
While I, while I recognize there is diverse opinion on our council, as I said many times before. We healthily and professionally disagree with each other. And that's what this is all about. That's what governance is about. That's what our democracy is about. So, what we are looking for then is a motion. If you go back to that one slide, it's the SUP. In terms of what Mr. Hager said, it's the change in. Shall terminate upon closure of oper, it's the change of.
Closure of operation, change of use, or change of certificate of occupancy.
The chair will entertain a motion to have that condition added to the recommendations that we see on slide thirty-three.
I need to approve with the amendment on the SUP to read the way Attorney Hager said.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Jamison. We have a second by Councilmember Harvey. City Council, I'm sorry, City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Veracruz for or against?
Or.
Councilmember McNabb for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
Against.
Mayor Tim Cooks for or against?
Against.
Councilmember Jamison for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For. By a vote of five to two, the motion is passed. Thank you very much, council. And thank you very much to Mr. Gwynne and to Mr. Wright for being with us and providing us with information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, council members. We will make this a property to be proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Item five C has been tabled by the city manager.
What's five C?
Five C, classified positions for civil service, police and fire. That's been tabled by the city manager. Moving on to item five D, considering ordinance, amend code of ordinances by amending chapter eighteen taxation. Article one in general by adding a new section eighteen four entitled residence homestead exemption from ad liborum taxation. In the minimum amount of three percent of assessed value in an amount no less than five thousand dollars for individuals who are owners of residences. And by reserving for future use sections eighteen dash five through eighteen ten. Mr. Summerlin, please.
Okay, next slide, please. So, just to give you a background of what has been discussed down up to this point. The, we discussed the homestead exemption, exemption at the city council retreat on October thirtieth. And again, in a workshop on January fourteenth, twenty nineteen. It was put on as an agenda item February second, twenty nineteen. The council tabled that pending the outcome of the property tax cap legislation. And then, on June eighteenth, it was again put on as an agenda item and the council voted at that time to not grant a homestead exemption. Next slide, please. The timeline I wanted to share with everyone, this is dictated by the Dallas Central Appraisal District, March eleventh. To make it appear on the appraisal notice. That time is passed. April twenty-sixth to be included in the first preliminary estimated values report. And then July first is the last date or the drop dead date to be included in the certified tax roll. Next slide, please. So, what I did is, I did the one, one percent, two percent, three percent. This was something that. We talked about way back in the council retreats to, to look at that. Because there's a five thousand minimum. On the homestead exemption, the one and two percent are very nearly the same and just a slight increase from three hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight twenty-four. In terms of what it would cost for our reduction in revenue to three forty-five, one eleven at the three percent. Next slide, please. And if you take the one, two and three percent and look at that in terms of what the reduction is. And this would be a per residential parcel. I just simply taken that and dividing it by the number of residential parcels. That'd be forty-one dollars at one percent and twenty-three cents, forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents at two percent. And then forty-four dollars, thirty-nine cents for the three percent per parcel. Next slide, please. Wanted to do a survey of finding out what all the other Dallas County cities, this is information that's published on the Dallas Central Appraisal District. They're required to publish what all the optional homestead exemptions are and the age sixty-five or older and disabled person exemptions are. So, out of thirty-one Dallas County cities, twelve cities, including Duncanville, do not offer a homestead exemption. Most of the ones on here either have higher home values or a higher sales tax base or both. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to also go back and take a look at our tax rate history. As you know, the last two years, we've lowered the property tax rate. In twenty nineteen, we lowered the property tax one and a half cents. And then in twenty twenty, we lowered it two point seven cents. Next slide, please. So, what I wanted to do is just take some examples. And what I did with this chart is give you some representative taxable valuations from a hundred thousand graduated up to five hundred thousand. And what that homestead exemption would be and what the taxpayer impact would be. And so, as you can see in all these scenarios, under the one percent, it'd be a, a simple five thousand at one percent. And that would equate to thirty-six dollars on, on an annual basis reduction in, in the taxpayer bill. And then at the two percent homestead exemption, you see that, you know, it's five thousand for a hundred thousand dollar home, five thousand for a two hundred thousand dollar home. Those are the minimums. And then it starts graduating up to six, eight and ten for three hundred, four hundred and five hundred thousand dollar. And again, the, the next column over, the taxpayer impact would be thirty-six dollars, thirty-six dollars, forty-three dollars, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two dollars. Per, per year. And then the same exercise with the three percent. You'd get, you know, five thousand, six thousand, nine thousand, twelve and fifteen thousand. And that would equate to thirty-six, forty-three, sixty-five, eighty-six and one oh eight reduction per year. And then I also added the two columns to show on the same valuation homes, what the impact was in lowering the tax bill. By us lowering the property tax rate the last two years. So, in twenty nineteen, that impact to. Each of those homes calculated out to be a fifteen dollar, thirty dollar, forty-five, sixty dollar, seventy-five dollar reduction in the tax bill. That was already granted in the tax rate reduction that we gave. And then, and when we lowered the tax again in twenty twenty, this of course came on the heels of the SB two. Where, where we had the three and a half percent property tax cap. And so, that lowered, or that lowered people's property tax bills again on a hundred thousand home, twenty-seven dollars up to a hundred and thirty-three dollars. For a half million dollar home. Next slide, please. So, just recapping some of the current negative budget impact considerations. Of course, the SB two came into effect last year and there's no provision to carve out for public safety. So, all of your automatic civil service step increases, you, you have to do those whether you have. You know, an increase in your property tax or not. And so, they'll have to be factored in. Based on our discussion with the Central Appraisal District for this year, this property, this year's property value is going to be. Flat or less than it was in the prior year. This will be the first time that we've had a flat or less property tax since the housing crash. And I, I, I had a hard time sort of believing in that because of the, the, the residential values everywhere you look, you see that they've increased. And so, I asked the appraisal district, well, why was that? And there are two primary factors for their. Prediction that, that our property values are going to decrease this year slightly or, or at least be flat. And that was the severe impact that COVID nineteen had on commercial property. And then the fact that there's very little sales data to go on on residential properties because there's so few sales out there. And then, of course, House Bill sixteen thirty-one, that. Cameras, so we had an increase to the journal that's approximately two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, thirty-three annually that did, did, was previously funded from the red light cameras. And then, we also last year had SB eleven fifty-two, which reduced the franchise fees for telecom entities. And for us, that decreased our general fund revenues approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually. And then, of course, the COVID nineteen, the economic activity slump that resulted in our lower sales tax. And if you combine that with the loss of our, one of our major sales tax generators, that was a pretty huge impact to the city of Duncanville. Next slide, please. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Summerlin, in your summary in the package that we were provided for this, I believe that the, the total impact on the general fund of the. The data that you provided us was somewhere over five hundred thousand dollars. Do I have that? Do I, I haven't pulled it up. I could reopen it, but if I recall that number, is that correct?
I believe that's approximate, yes. I believe that's approximate, yes.
Okay, I think, you know, this, this is a difficult thing for us to encounter. On the one hand, each of us as elected officials of our constituency want to do what we feel best for our constituents. And at the same time, we as a council are responsible for governing our city. And for governing our city, we take into account what's necessary and best for the greater good. For the entire populace and for all the services that we provide. And what brings into that is safety and service as well from our firefighters and our and our police department. And our ability to maintain them without them looking elsewhere for some other type of employment. And we have to consider that because SB two really capped us and put us in financial. And it could put us in a very difficult situation. It has put us in a difficult situation. We understand that. The the hard part of this is to say, there's, there's political capital involved in this decision. We'd love to do it, everybody. We'd like to be able to walk through all of our neighborhoods and get a pat on the back saying, thanks, elected official. For for giving us this homestead exemption for reducing my tax bill from forty-one, fifty-five dollars a year. The nicety of that is difficult to balance with the general good of the impact of over a half a million dollars. Coming into the city in terms of what we need to operate our city for the safety of our constituents and doing the best for our city. This is, this is hard for me to eloquently articulate and to pass along to our constituents. But here again, we are faced with the fiduciary responsibility of doing what's best for the greater good of this entire city. And I know that there are those on council who strongly are in favor of this. And I want to say that I am not strongly opposed to this. I am reluctantly opposed to this. Because in my heart of hearts, I would love to be able to do it for our citizens. The numbers just paint a bleaker picture than what we would hope to have in terms of the impact on our general fund. And the ability of what we can do for each individual homestead or occupant of of the residences within our city. So that's, those are my comments. And I'm going to turn it over to you, council members, for your inputs as you wish to make comments.
Council member Jamison had her hand up first and then council member Vera Cruz.
This was my agenda item, so I would like to have been able to have addressed it first. But I I'll start with the. There's so many things and I I don't even know where to start. Looking at the list and it's the same list that we got before, but the red light funds, we lost those in two thousand nineteen. So we're going to hold on to that and keep saying, oh, but two thousand nineteen, we lost the red light funds. We lost them in two thousand nineteen. And it was, that was an item that a whole lot of the citizens did not want. And that was across the state. That's why it's gone. Second, the the franchise fees, okay, that was the legislature. That's a hundred and twenty thousand. And then you talk about inflation. Well, it's inflation for the people out there too. But what you've had is a tremendous increase in appraisal values. That's why from three percent, when we talked about it years ago. It was thirty-four dollars and now it's up to forty-four dollars is because of the increase on the appraisals on the houses have gone up. And we know people right here in Duncanville who have tried to buy another house and can't because there are none available. And that's across maybe they're, it's going to be flat. I don't believe it. I think that it's going to be a booming real estate market again because we're being bought as fast as they come on the market. And I don't believe that the appraisal, appraisal values will go down either. Also issue, when we were all willing to borrow from the general fund. What was it? One point two million for a project? And Mr. Summerlin, you told us we could get three percent interest on it. If we had one point two million for a project, then we have some money. That is available in our general fund. And it's very difficult to make that. Feel good about it, that we can do it for one thing, but we can't for citizens. And the the last thing, I guess, I mean, because I think what we have to do is we have to find the area. Where we can trim off some of the fat, if you will. Because we do carry a reserve fund of seventy-five days instead of sixty days like most cities. And that's not necessarily something that is necessary. That's something we do. And there are areas to find this money. You just have to find the areas where they where they are. And I love these hot buttons, really. It's almost like a sales trick. Oh, you're going to lose police. You're going to lose the firemen. That is not true. We have got areas that we can cut back to come up with this money. I mean, that's just, come on. And to say those sorts of things really is offensive. Because I know that there is, there is money there and I know there's areas that we can find it. And we deserve to give something back to the citizens. And it's disturbing to me when you showed that list, DCAT. I called it up and looked at it. And one of the things that really kind of is of concern to me is that these suburbs. In southwest Dallas County are not offering the homestead exemption. And I look for the common denominator. And I'll just leave that open for you to think about because we're southwest Dallas County. And we ought to have some of the same benefits that some of our sister cities to the north have. And look as appealing and when you're talking about that, if you have a half a million dollar house in three percent. You'll save seventy-five dollars. Come on. How many houses do we have that are half a million? We have some. But this isn't a city full of half million dollar houses. And I think what this is basically three percent is like a token. Is a token of returning some of the tax dollars that we receive. And handing them back so that they do have a homestead exemption and they have some benefit. And to continually say things like. We're not going to buy the new washing machine because we might need a car in the future. It, it, I mean, it just doesn't ring true. There are, there's somewhere and, you know. I don't have a problem with challenging staff to come up with, because we've done it before. We have sent the budget back to staff and told them to find some areas to cut. And there's something there that you can do to cut back, to come up with this, to give the citizens of Duncanville a homestead exemption. It's not that hard. We can find it, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And the amount that he told, that he said earlier that it was costing us. Was five hundred and sixteen thousand hundred and seventy. And that was adding in the two thousand nineteen red light fund, last year's franchise fees. And then normal inflationary, which, you know, all the citizens have that too, along with their taxes continuing to go up. So we are advocates for the citizens. We are elected by the citizens. And this is a token and it's not going to kill us to find. Some revenue to hand back to them. And this has got to stop with this, oh, we're going to lose firemen. Oh, we're going to lose policemen. And that's not right because that's not true. And if you want to hold to that, then we should never bring up projects that we want to loan money to ourselves. That money that we don't have. Something got to give here. And I think that we need to stand up for the citizens in Duncanville and give them. A basically token homestead exemption because it's not that much. And I think everybody here knows that. So I reserve the right to say something if something else comes up, but that's basically my thought.
Thank you, Councilman Jamison. City Secretary, who was next, please?
Council member Vera Cruz.
Mr. Vera Cruz.
Can you hear me, sir? So, so if we're granted or this happens to pass tonight, how would it be reinstated or or reversed? In other words, would it be through a public vote? I'm not sure who asked that question to.
If you, if you pass the homestead exemption. I would defer to the city attorney, but I believe you can also revoke that. Or or vote to revoke that. But it's, it's my understanding, having been in this business for. Over forty years that once you grant a homestead exemption, you don't ever, you don't ever repeal it. It just never happens.
But you can. That was the question.
Okay, thank you, sir.
City Secretary, who was next, please?
I wasn't, I don't know if anybody else had their hands up. Um, Ms. Jamison has her hand up right now.
It it can be revoked and it would be a city council, if I'm not incorrect, city attorney. The city council would revoke it. But also I would remind you that this isn't for this year. This is for next year. So. This, you have to do it so far in advance with Dallas County. That you're, you're basically doing it one year in advance.
That's correct.
And, you know, the council can revoke it. The fact that they are not revoking it says to me that that's what people want. That's what citizens want. And I think that it is a good neighborly gesture. And I think that that, I mean, that's, I've tried to get it passed for a few years. I think there are others out there. I think this is a positive. It's a good thing. And I think somebody in this end of town or this end of the metroplex. ought to be doing that. We ought to look like we're the up and coming. This is the place to live, the things that we offer. Positive. And I want to look positive. I want to be positive. And I think that we can do it. I don't think there's any. There's a few tweaks we can do and I welcome staff to help us do that. Find where it's least painful for you.
I'm sorry, say what?
Pro Tim Cooks has his hand raised.
Okay, Mr. Cooks.
You know, I know we, we've had this discussion many times before and and I'll go on the record again to say I do support. Homestead exemption. And when I think about me living in Cedar Hill. And having homestead exemption, I was somewhat confused because when I called the central appraisal office, they told me I had it already. And now that I look at a couple of things, it looks like I did not have it from a city perspective. I had it from Dallas County. I had it from Parkland, had it from the school district. And so we are getting it some, we are, it's the same thing in Duncanville, we're getting the same thing, but not from the city. I understand that. And so I also want to be very cautious of of. What the councilman Jamison said as well, and that is having, asking staff to look and see where the funding is coming from. So let me really start with the question I have for Richard. If it's three hundred and forty-five thousand, is that year one through five? Or is that every year it changes?
Well, it, of course, it would change a little bit, but that would be pretty, pretty, pretty much. The, you, you know, again, depending on his values increase, that amount's going to increase somewhat proportionally to that. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would not vary dramatically from that amount year to year. But that, that, once you, once you, whatever you grant, then that's forever.
Okay, and and I knew that what we, what we talked about this, that one percent and two percent. Was, as we said before, was an insult to our citizens and I agree and it'll come in on that again. That three percent, again, it, it, it's, it's a start. But it's also start looking at our budget and we're right in the midst of the budget season. And so I do need to ask, Ms. Ms. Aretha, have you had an opportunity? To look at what Richard has presented to us tonight? And having the other further comments for us, with your short time being here. I know that's, I know that's a short time, but we've, we had it the note with an old city manager. You can tell me if you have enough time to look at it as well, but let me get your comment and then I'll keep, I have other questions.
So I participated with the council cats last week, a week before last. And we'd actually started our budget preparation for next year and estimated that we would generally, like most, get about a three percent increase. I was shocked, just as Mr. Summerlin was, when they told us that was not the case for Duncanville. There are things, certain factors that led to that. All of us reading that houses are selling or not moving on the market quickly. But one of the things that they stated was the lack of sale because they are going very fast was one of the reasons for an increase. They also talked to us about some of the challenges with the commercial properties. And so based on that and even going and following up with our surrounding best southwest cities. Those, we're just so far developed. They're basically seeing their increases based on new construction. I believe personally that Dallas County is being very cautious in their new, this fiscal, this year's appraisals. I think part of that has to do a lot with the many of the challenges that they received to the appraisals in during COVID. And I, I, no one will ever say this, but I do believe there is an air of caution that has gone into home appraisals. From a statewide countywide appraisal district where we're seeing them not moving heavy. Now, when they told us that we would be equal or either less, that basically put our budget process into a different. Format because basically now we're having to go back and our revenue projections to reduce it. Or to take away that three point five percent and start to dig deep and see what other cuts can we make if that's necessary. Because as Mr. Summerlin did mention, we do have civil service individuals who are in a step increase. I am, as you just said, very new and really starting to do a deep dig into understanding. And as the councilwoman mentioned, we have maintained a very healthy fund balance. But those are for one time. Fund balance cannot be used for day-to-day operations. And so as we start to look at it, yes, we will have to dig deep. Yes, we will have to cut. And I'm not thinking of police and fire and I would never recommend police and fire. We're, we're going to have to look at some of the other things, including streets and and things. So just to say, I've got to spend some more time because this conversation comes the wake of something I did not anticipate. Which was the no increase. If we were having the traditional increase, I would feel a little more comfortable with this conversation. But I'm just not comfortable based on that and our sales tax also showing a cut in everything that Mr. Someone showed me thus far. What I would like to see. COVID has had its impact. I hope next year things will be better. But right now I don't see a positive outlook from a revenue standpoint in our community.
So let me go back to ask another question. Remind me your resume for a moment. So let me go back to ask another question. Remind me, your resume for a moment, when you went to the, when you were in Petersburg, and they were in a deficit. You got very creative, I understand. Can you share that just a little bit about what you did to help with that deficit?
Well, Petersburg had a, a very different challenge that we have here. We had a, a collection issue. So we had a lot of trouble with people collecting. We also had issues with our revenue projections. And so we would project things and, and, and budget based on a revenue projection that was unrealistic. And so we started out, and that was even pre, predating me, with a zero-based budget. We started from scratch and we looked at everything. We then, the second phase, as I came in, is really took a, a close deep dive into our revenues to see where we were, but also looking at our organization to see where we were spending and where we did not need to spend. And some of that looked at even, for example, we had actually proposed outsourcing our entire parks and recreation department to the YMCA, so we had to become very creative. But what we did not have in, in my last organization was a fund balance. And the reason we did not have a fund balance is our revenues and expenditures kept going. We've kept using fund balance every year. In two thousand eight, with the great depression that we all faced, we just kept things going. And ultimately, by the time I got there, the fund balance represented a negative seven million, which means we owed seven million people. And so I'm very uncomfortable when we use fund balance for day-to-day operations versus one-time activities. And so we will have to make cuts if that's what we decide to do.
So he, so here's why I asked that question, because it sounds as though you have a little bit of experience of, of being able to take a situation, but not very, it wasn't, like you mentioned, wasn't Petersburg, but you have a similar experience of looking at these types of things and coming back with a recommendation to the council. Let me ask a couple of the questions. One is, Richard, you showed that over sixty-five was thirty thousand exemption. I'm looking at, I'm not sure if I'm looking at something different, but it showed me Duncanville was twenty-six thousand four. Is that, am I, are we looking at different numbers?
No, that, that was the old, the old amount, the twenty-six four, and we voted, the council voted a few years ago to increase that to thirty thousand. You're looking at an old number.
As an old number, okay, all right, all right. So the other, the, the other comment, then thank you for clearing it up for me. Also, still, I'm very concerned and really will ask, from Councilman Jameson's standpoint, before, again, I would like to have homestead exemption. At the same time, I'd like to see the numbers before I would say yes to that. Numbers such as Ms. Oritha going back with Richard and massaging how this is going to impact us as a whole city. I'm glad to hear you say it would not impact, the impact of fire or police. And, and that, that, I'm like Councilman Jameson, that's just a little carrot that I think you say before, but I would agree. I would hope that that's the case. Number one, giving you an opportunity to go back and come back to us on where or what could be a recommendation for three hundred and forty-five thousand. Or consider the power, and let's just see if we, we consider giving our seniors the homestead exemption, so not phasing into it all at one time, perhaps phasing into our seniors first at sixty-five, and see how much that will impact us first. Giving us a year in our belt and giving us time to build up. But I would like to do those two things, for you to go back, and perhaps my recommendations to come back and then tell us. I know this is an election year, and I know everybody is amped to say, let me, let's do this now. But at the same time, as the mayor just mentioned, it is, it's, it's more than just the election piece of this. It is, well, citizens will want, but even if citizens want, we still have to make sure that we provide the information that we need to move forward to keep our city running. So those are my two requests. One, or three, I love, I do want home for the exemption. But two, we would like the city manager to have an opportunity to go back, work with Richard to look at it again. And then three, pilot with our seniors sixty-five or older first. Thank you, that's my coming.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. Harvey, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if I could present an alternative and, and be of some assistance in what we're trying to do, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a three percent homestead exemption with no reduction for funding for police and fire operations. Twenty-five percent of the total estimated loss of revenue be covered through a reduction in the mayor and council budget. It'd be about eighty-six thousand two seventy-eight. A decrease of two positions and related expenditures and a practice of not hiring vacancies for ninety days after separation of service, except for police and fire operations. So we want to get the citizens what they bags for. We're willing to make the necessary sacrifice to do it, and we also have provided staff with a way forward as to the type of cuts we would be looking for, so that way that will help us make an efficient decision in terms of the way forward.
I understand your desire to make a motion. I don't believe we are yet ready to do that. I understand what you've just said in terms of presenting alternatives. And at the same time, I would like to, if, if, if there are no other comments, here's what I wanted to do. Okay, I see Mr. Max Burnett.
But, but first, but first, but first, I, I just like a clarification.
Uh, just for races.
Just, just, just clarification from the parliamentarian. Is it too early for me to make a motion technically?
Yes, because I do not feel that there has been.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm asking the parliamentarian.
Who's the parliamentarian?
City Attorney.
Okay.
If anyone that has the floor has the right to make a motion at the time they have the floor.
I want to second it if we can have a discussion on it.
Well, I will say this, one of the, the problems that you have is you don't have anything on the agenda to make budget cuts tonight. You either have to pass the ordinance, not pass the ordinance, or table the ordinance. I understand how Mr. Harvey justifies how he wants to pay for it, but you don't have those items before you to vote on. So the only item you have to vote on tonight is whether or not you'll pass this ordinance. The rest of it is instructive to the manager's office to implement those budgetary constraints in the future on how to pay for it.
Yeah, and this is next year's budget.
Yeah, he didn't say that.
Yeah, it has to be, because it's too late to get it for the tax relief this year.
Mid-year, you can make mid-year budget amendments, and so.
For Dallas County? For Dallas County?
No, it's not. This isn't Dallas County that's on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the code of ordinances, ordinance to add homestead exemption. That's what's on your agenda.
Right.
There is nothing on the agenda about making budget cuts either now or in the future.
I understand that, but I'm just saying.
That was Mr. Harvey's way to pay for what would be a shortfall as a result of the ordinance that was passed. So the motion that could only be had tonight is either to pass the ordinance, to not pass the ordinance, or table the ordinance.
And if you look at your package, look at the ordinances there. That's what we are voting on. We are voting on this ordinance, section eighteen dash four, residents' homestead exemption pursuant to Article Eight, Section one dash B, the Texas Constitution, so on and so on. At time of exemption, at least five percent appraised value, not less than five thousand dollars for mandatory taxation. Continuing on through this, section two and section three, we are voting on a three percent.
But what Patrick said can't be amended, Bob?
No.
You don't answer, Barry.
City, city, as what our city attorney just said, the things Patrick mentioned can be consideration. We can give a consideration in the budgeting process by the city manager and staff. What we have before us is an ordinance, and that's all we can vote on tonight. In fact.
Well, the only thing that I was going to say is, when he was talking about cutting back the city council budget, we didn't even have, we used none last year. COVID, we didn't go anywhere. We haven't gone anywhere this year. So you got a couple of years. But we never have any money.
So I'd like another motion that we table this item until next, next meeting.
There, I didn't hear a motion to table. And Mr. Mac, Mr. Mac Burnett.
I'm a second on Patrick's.
Mr. Max Burn, there is no motion acceptable by Mr. Harvey, because it does not address what's on the table for us to vote on. Now, Mr. Mac Burnett had some comments, and I wish him to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I know that this is a topic that's, that has always been a hot-button topic. The, the, the biggest concern for me related towards doing one right now is the long-term effects. We are coming out of a period where we're, we have, our, our funds are there. I think Richard illustrated as well. This city council has given has reduced the tax rate. If you reduce the tax rate, not only are you doing it for your residences, you're doing it for your businesses. I don't think people are looking at the whole full impact on this stuff, too. You know, if you want your businesses, do something for them, too. And when you look at Richard's, what he put up there, what we're talking about doing, you're, you're essentially putting the city at, at a, at a level where you have to be careful. On the recommendation from our staff who, who has an impeccable record in terms of finance, they're saying, let's look at it next year. You know, let's not do it this time. Let's look, look at it next year. The we're, we're looking at other projects like the P twenty-five. How are we going to pay for it? That's, that's an expense, and that also goes to police and fire, and it also goes along to when with, if you don't get that, then you don't get the grants that go along with police and fire. So there's, there's projects in front of us that we need to look at. I think our city manager explained it quite clearly and well, what would be a best practice. Thank you.
What we have before us, and what I was attempting to do a while ago, knowing that this was brought before us, Councilmember as a proponent, and understanding full well that she is a proponent of it, and she has eloquently supported her position as well, that I wanted to go to Councilmember Jameson to make the motion as a proponent of what is written. And that's what we have before us. Now, Councilmember Cooks, because of some concerns, and Councilmember Harvey, putting additional facets into this, we have to understand what we can properly and legally do in terms of taking this forward or tabling it and coming forward, or we go forward with and ask Councilmember Jameson to, as a proponent, make the motion as stated on the agenda, or we, as a council, ask that this be tabled for further examination by city staff. That's, that's where we're really at, folks. Yeah, Mr. Hager.
Mayor, Mayor, Ms. Jameson did state that you could amend the ordinance. That is appropriate. What Mr. Harvey was suggesting wasn't an amendment to the ordinance, but a way of paying for, and that's outside. So you could make a motion to grant the homestead exemption and put three thousand dollars or three, reduce three percent to two percent, which can't do is make a motion to approve the ordinance and make budget cuts. That's what you can't, so, so that we're clear. Understood?
Understood. I see, Mr. Harvey, you have your hand up?
So would it be possible, let's say if someone were to make a motion to do a homestead exemption, and then I say, okay, but I would like to propose a friendly amendment, A, B, C, D, E, and G. And if that person accepts my friendly amendment, can we not vote on that?
But the friendly amendment has to be within the confines of the ordinance by changing the percentages, not amending the budget. You can't, to quote the great Lewis Nichols, you cannot do indirectly what you can't do directly, so you, you can't, you can't put a rider, since we, we don't have, it's not like Congress where you can put a rider on, on the ordinance. You either have to amend the direct language of the ordinance, or you have to vote to approve it, vote to deny it, or vote to table it to a, I would probably recommend you do a date certain so that we know when this is going to come back up.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for this as is, three percent. And the funding can be figured out, but I want to say one thing, and that is that eighty-five percent of our tax base is residential and fifteen percent is martial. While you're talking about what are we going to do for the businesses, the, the preponderance of our tax base is residential. They're the ones that are carrying the load.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks has his hand raised.
Yeah, I, I, I still, and I know we have, I guess, a motion out there, but I'm still wanting to table this to still allow staff with our new leader, Ms. Vina Vini's going back and putting a reasonable time, even the next meeting, if that's possible with her, to come back to give us more information. We've tabled it. We've played with this a whole lot. We've talked about this a whole lot, but I really would like for her to get a chance to look at it. We, we, we've brought her in for a reason. And I think if we're going to respect her expertise, respect her, her, her experience of handling something similar like this before, give her an opportunity to come back and even still answer the questions that Councilman Harvey talked about of what she could cut, what she couldn't cut, and then give us opportunity to look at it, but at least give them her a one more meeting opportunity to look at this, and, and we won't prolong it any longer. We'll either go for it or not. So I'd like to make a motion that we table this until our very next meeting.
Mr. Hager, we have a motion on the table. Mr. Cooks interjected a motion, and it's, it's not possible.
You have a motion, you have a motion on the floor. That motion should, you should ask for a second. Once that's seconded, then Mr. Cooks or Mayor Pro Tim's motion is appropriated at that time.
All right, so Councilmember Jameson has made a motion to accept what is written in item five D. And I will read it as it's stated in the agenda, just for the record, so we've all got it. Consider an ordinance submitting the code of ordinances by amending chapter eighteen taxation, Article One in general, by adding a new section eighteen four entitled residence homestead exemption for mandatory taxation in the minimum amount of three percent of assessed value in an amount no less than five thousand dollars for individuals who are owners of residences, and by reserving for future use, sections eighteen five through eighteen ten. That is Councilmember Jameson's motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
There is a second. We will now vote on this particular amendment, motion. Or, I'm sorry, now, yeah, you said now Councilmember Cooks can make a motion as well.
Yes, and that motion takes precedent. A motion to postpone or table takes precedent over the main motion. So the main motion is stated by the mayor is to approve agenda item five D as written.
So Councilmember Cooks, you have made a motion. Restate your motion again, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this item. I'd like to make a motion that we table this item until our next meeting, giving city manager an opportunity with staff to come back with recommendations.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to-
So now the motion is on the precedent motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay. We all understand. We are now not voting on what's in the ordinance on item five D. We are now voting on a motion to table item five D. That's what we're voting on. City Council, I'm sorry, City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
Against.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson for or against? Councilmember Jameson for or against?
Against.
At-large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
Against.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
Against. The motion to table is not approved. We will now vote for the motion to carry forward item five D. We had a motion to prove, and we had a motion for a second. We're now voting on item five D.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
Against.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
Against.
Um, Councilmember Anderson for or against?
Against.
Councilmember Jameson for or against?
For.
Councilmember at-large Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
Against. The motion is not approved by a vote of four to three against. Moving on to item five E. Consider a resolution approving the sign control board grant of variance allowing a wall sign on the rear wall of Takeout Burgers located seven ninety-five West Wheatland Road. Building official Randy Gauthier presenting. Please, thank you.
Again, Mayor, just before Randy gets started, I think this is the first time you all have met Randy at, at council. Randy, again, is our building official. He's been the building official for two, six months, and prior to that, he was our building inspector for a, a year. And then he comes to us out of Oklahoma with over twenty years of, of experience as a building official in that state. So I'll just, I wanted to introduce him to you guys, since this is the first time he's briefing y'all, and I'll turn it over to Randy. Thank you.
Mr. Gauthier, are you there? Greg, our city secretary, is Mr. Gauthier online?
He, he is online and is not muted. He says he is here or something.
Just see his chat.
Yes. What I'll, what I'll do, I don't know what the, the problems are. I'll, I'll take this, this briefing. Mayor Gordon.
Okay.
Um, so again, this is a sign control board variance for Takeout Burgers. Next slide, please. Again, this is a proposal to approve a, a variance that the sign control board recommends allowing a wall sign on the rear wall of Takeout Burgers located at seven ninety-five the Tom Thumb Shopping Center. Next slide, please. So background, back in February, this was presented to the sign control board, and they voted unanimously to approve it. She shook, the owner of Takeout Burgers, and he was the one that requested this. He is actually online tonight. At least he was on earlier tonight. Currently, according to the ordinance, you're not allowed to have a rear wall of any structure. I, I would, I should say, staff is not given the authority in the ordinance to approve rear wall signs. That is something that has to go to council. And so this variance would allow him to place a sign on the, his, the rear wall of his, uh, next slide, please. So, again, just to orient you to the map that you see here, Takeout Burgers in the Tom Thumb Shopping Center, it is highlighted as the yellow box, which is in the middle of the, the structure in the southeast corner, southwest corner of the shopping center. Uh, the red star represents the proposed location of the rear sign, and you can see the rear view at the top of the slide and the front view at the bottom of the slide. Uh, and my, I've had previous conversations with Mr. Shook, and, and he has a lot of, of customers who come looking for him and to go to his restaurant, and they're traveling on South Cedar Ridge, south. And so they pull into the Tom Thumb parking lot over there by Boston Market, and then they sort of get lost in trying to find his, his store when they enter to the north of it. As, next slide, please. And so what he's asking to do is sort of take the same sign that he currently has on the front of his store that you see on the, the left side of the slide and recreate it on the backside of his slide. This is the slide, the, the sign that has the yellow dash would represent what the sign would look like when you're driving in the shopping center off of South Cedar Ridge, and you're sort of driving across by Boston Market and the Japanese restaurant as you're going to Tom Thumb. Uh, next slide, please. So again, we are recommending approval by council of the sign control boards' grant of the variance to put a wall sign at, in behind Takeout Burgers. Subject to your questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ramey. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Mac Burnett. Is there a second?
Vera Cruz.
Mr. Vera Cruz, a second. It's City Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Vera Cruz for or against? Councilmember Mac Burnett for or against?
For.
Councilmember Anderson for or against?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Cooks for or against?
For.
Councilmember Jameson for or against?
For.
At-large Councilmember Harvey for or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon for or against?
For. Thank you, Council unanimously approved, and our best wishes to Mr. Shook and the future success of his business. Mr. Hager, yes, Mr. Harvey.
I would like to place on the next agenda a, a consideration of the homestead exemption with the changes I recommended.
In order to, I understand that, and would you, I think is a favor to our city manager if you would put that in writing so she can. We got that on, we got it recorded. I know we've got it recorded, or City Secretary can enumerate the minutes. Or if you wanna send an email to our city manager with what you're calling-
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you ask our city attorney, I think there's a ninety days after something fails. Is that correct, city attorney, before we can bring it back?
Our, our rules allow reconsideration of the motion. That would be the appropriate request. If Mr. Harvey wants to make that request, you can put it in writing, but we're allowed to reconsider the motion.
Immediately?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it's, that ninety days is in the city charter, but it is at the discretion of council.
That's where we're at.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Okay, uh, we are not going to take executive session yet, so we're going to move on to staff and board reports. Uh, this is the monthly financial report of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one by Mr. Summerlin.
A next slide, please. So February is the fifth month in the fiscal year. Our benchmark revenues expenditures would be expected to be about forty-one point seven percent of the budget. Next slide. General fund ending, unreserved fund balance is twenty-three point two million, two hundred sixty-five days of operations. Uh, keep in mind that this is the time of year when we've collected, uh, or in the process of having collected the majority of our sales tax, I mean, our property tax revenues. And of course, we spend that over the remainder of the fiscal year. And so, um, we're, you know, well in excess of our seventy-five day reserve. The twenty twenty-one beginning fund balance, uh, was greater than we expected due to the final fiscal year twenty twenty transactions, which included four hundred and seventeen thousand that we transferred in from the emergency fund, a portion of the CARES Act, and then a transfer in from the closure of the medical insurance fund for three hundred and forty thousand. We thought that was gonna end up being a transfer out, but because of Covid and a favorable run out of the medical claims, that ended up being, being a, a, a transfer in. So that kind of flipped on us unexpectedly. And, uh, next slide, please. So, um, our sales tax revenue is eighty-three thousand, right now running, uh, as of February, three point nine percent lower than the same time last year. And of course, that's due to the pandemic. Property taxes, ninety-seven point seven percent of the budget, as I just alluded to, we've collected the majority of that already. It's about six percent higher than the same time last year. And then overall, our general fund revenues collected are sixty-seven point eight percent, so a little above target. And then our operating expenditures are about thirty-one percent of the operational budget. Next slide, please. This is just a graph that shows the purple line if our revenues were incurred evenly over time. And then the blue line is the three-year average, and then the red line is the actuals for this year. So as I talked about on the general fund revenues, because of the property tax collections, we always get that huge spike up in that December, January, February timeframe, and then that evens out over time. Uh, next slide. And so here's the property taxes laagered out from that, and you can see that same sort of trend on the graph. Next slide, please. So, uh, sales tax, as we stated before, uh, you know, the, those are performing a little less than last year, but it's about where we budgeted for, for sales tax, knowing the effects of the pandemic. Next slide, please. And then our general fund expenditures, of course, trending below that three-year average so far this year. And a lot of that, again, due to savings and travel and training. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, utility fund summary, we have an ending fund balance of February, two point two million. Uh, and if we're, after we take out the fund balance deduction of five million for the AMI, and that's leaves us with about forty days of operations. We prefer, of course, that sixty-day fund balance. We don't, we're not quite there when we take out that five million that we have reserved for the AMI. Water sue revenues are one month in arrears, so the, the, the revenue that you see here is just four months of revenue instead of five, and sanitation fund has an ending fund balance of sixty-eight thousand. I'm sorry, of sixty-eight days of operation. I can't see my slide over here. I gotta move something. Hold on just a second. Uh, ending fund balance of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. Sorry, couldn't, couldn't read my slide because of the window, and that's sixty-eight days of operation. Next slide, please. Same thing we did with the general fund. We map out the revenues for the utility fund. We typically see that three-year average and the actuals start to cross that straight line for the budget when we get to the summer months as those water, water use increases. Uh, next slide, please. And then our utility fund expenditures, they're falling along just below the three-year average. Uh, next slide. And then this is our summary of our one-time projects, and we have a couple of things that we've put on hold that we're waiting on further direction on, and so that's it. Any questions?
I have one.
I'll do a one for you.
Go back to the, uh, go back in your slides. Keep going. Keep going. I can't see either with those. Utility fund ending balance is two point two million after reserved fund balance deduction of five million per AMI, and whatever's behind, I can't see. What does it say? Forty?
Forty, forty days of oper- of operations, and we would prefer having sixty days of fund balance. And which we, we do, but we're trying to keep that five million reserved. And as, as I've talked about for quite some time, if we, we, we already know that AMI is gonna cost us more than five million, and so we're gonna have to look for alternative funding sources for making up that gap.
As I recall, we haven't voted for that yet.
Um, actually, um, the, uh-
Mr. Summerlin, was that the meeting, I think it was, I remember seeing a meeting prior to starting that this was presented, and I thought council did take action on it. I don't know-
Yeah, they, they did. They voted-
I don't think we voted on it.
No, the, the, there, we'll have to go back and verify in the minutes, but I'm pretty sure that it was voted on to move forward with the project.
I think we voted on purchasing this.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go back. I'll go back and verify in the minutes.
Jameson, is it, you finished? Okay. Hey, Richard, let me ask, is any of the money in the fund balance, does this still have anything at all with the CARE Act of funding? Any funding at all that, that relates to that?
Yeah, yeah, there, the, the, as I, as I stated before, we ended fiscal year twenty-four hundred thousand dollars above where we projected because of CARES Fund Act. That was reimbursement for, uh, public safety.
Should it be there in, 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 in that, in that category? Because it, is it not misleading? Would it not be misleading for us to think that we have more than your own funding? We really do?
Well, well, it, where else, where else do you suggest that we put it?
Wherever, wherever we have to get it from, or whatever, uh-
From the, the expenditures came from the general fund. We were reimbursed for expenditures.
Out of the general fund?
Right.
But I was thinking, okay, but we purchased something, give me an example of the department that we used it from. Do we, let's say, police department, right? Did they get part of the CARES Fund, uh, fund, funding?
It, it was reimbursement for costs that they incurred for manning the- It, it was reimbursement for costs that they incurred for manning the, uh, COVID testing sites and the distribution of the COVID testing.
So that went, but we pulled it not out of their cost center, but out of the general fund is what you're saying.
That they're, they're paid out of the general fund. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I mean, I'll keep looking at, I'll just, I just thought it was misleading to know in general fund. But according to what you're saying, that's where you got the funds from. Okay, all right. Thanks.
In our last general council, this question came up, Mark, as well in terms of being able to line item identify that CARES Act so that would not be lost. And so any audit that was done of the books in terms of where those monies come from and where they're itemized would definitely show. And if we were going to deep detail into the ledgers, that CARES Act would show in the general fund. We, we had some discussion on that. Any other questions of Mr. Summerlin? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six B, uh, fire department quarterly report, uh, by EMS chief Mike Ryan. Chief?
Hello, everyone. Sam and Greg at Conference Texas Fire Chief Association Conference in College Station. Next slide, please. We're going to talk about some staffing. If y'all haven't met Lauren, you really ought to. She's a wonderful person. She's Tanya. She's the new Tanya and she's a, she's a pleasure. We, uh, hired two new firefighters, uh, Benjamin Case Harper. Yeah, kind of ironically, twenty-seven years ago, Case's father, uh, worked here at Duncanville Fire Department, left us to go to Plano. He's a captain there and a much younger, thinner recruit took his place and his name is Mike Ryan. So it case, it case's father is the reason I, I got hired here. Uh, the next one is Peyton. Peyton is a registered nurse who's, uh, come to work for us. Uh, he's from the Corsicana area. Next slide. All right. So we still have two vacancies. One of those was still on the books. We're at the very end of our, uh, list that we have going on. We have a physical agility list for the remaining applicants on March sixth. We, uh, not doing the, uh, interviews the first full week of April. Those are on April fourteenth. We currently have four firefighters in paramedic school. They're in two different phases of that. Two of them are fixing to get out here in the next two weeks. They'll have to take their national registry test. It'll take a while for the state to, uh, finalize their stuff, but they should be on the street here in the next three weeks or so. The other two are currently in paramedic school and scheduled to graduate on August the thirteenth. The other two recruits that I talked about, he will start paramedic school on June first. And Peyton Suther will go to a, our end of paramedic program in August. They'll both get out in December of this year. Next slide. So accomplishments that we've done, uh, my, uh, Lauren works every Friday at the vaccination site at Fair Park. She's a valuable asset to them and she gives us a lot of good feedback. I went to Fair Park, uh, a week and a half ago. I'm learning to do the shots when not that I could do shots, but I'm learning to enter those into the luminaire system. And hopefully in the next week or two, I'll be able to start vaccinations here for city employees and other residents that were missed, especially the homebound ones. Uh, next slide, I'll talk about that. So we did go out. I went out with, uh, the National Guard through the Texas Department of Mercy Management and gave homebound resident shots. They got this list off of, uh, Meals on Wheels. And we added to that with our, uh, people that we run on a regular basis, our patients that are assist invalids is what we call them. And those are people who couldn't get out and do the shots themselves. So we delivered them right to their house. That second round starts tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. And they're doing it with a TIFMS deployment unit, uh, so I don't have to, I don't have to go out with those. And I'll be able to concentrate on my own training to do it myself. So that's, that was a very good program that we were able to deliver. Next slide. So we were, everybody was impacted by the winter storm. Uh, our weather response plan was activated. Uh, I thought it went very well on our part. We had some equipment failure. We're not used to our equipment getting that cold. Uh, with the generator went out, we lost heat and some of our pumps froze up. We were able to, to drain them, but the valve still froze up. Some of those actually snapped off. These are made out of hard hardened steel, snapped off at that, uh, structure fire that we had a few weeks ago. That was, uh, that structured fire went to a three alarm fire. Uh, we did an after-action review. It was held on March eighteenth. Uh, Assistant Chief Reyes from Cedar Hill came down and helped us do that as a third-party review. We learned a lot of things that we can improve on and things we need to prepare for in the future. It was, it was actually a really good after-action review. We also did, uh, an after-action review to discuss the city's response during that on February twenty-fourth. And I think we learned a lot of valuable information for future winter storms of that, uh, magnitude. Next slide. We were awarded, uh, the twenty twenty-one emergency management, uh, what is it called? Performance grant. This is for Chief Rhodey, who is our emergency management coordinator on the books, uh, with the help of Lauren. We get this every year. It's already submitted and approved, but we will not get the funds till about this time next year. And that's typically, uh, somewhere in the ballpark of a fourth of Chief Rhodey's salary. Next slide. And this is last one. This is our total calls for service for quarter two. We had, uh, forty, uh, calls for service for fires, fifteen of those building fire, fifteen building fires. The others are just fire-related calls. Five hundred others. Some of those are responding to medical, uh, US crews. And US calls for service were thirteen thirty-eight. That puts us, if we stay on that track, about seventy-seven hundred calls for the year. And we did a hundred and fifteen in business inspections. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief Ryan.
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, first of all, hi, Mike. This is John Jameson.
Yeah.
Mike used to live in my neighborhood. He was my constituent. And so I have enduring love for him, even though he moved, um...
I miss that house. I stopped by yesterday and talked to the owners that own it now.
You did.
They're good people.
Um, how many registered nurses work for the fire department?
Just one right now. We've had one before and, uh, and he's no longer with us. But, uh, yeah, it's, that's, there's only two or three are into paramedic programs in the country. Luckily, we have one right here in Farmer's Branch at Brookhaven, where Case Harper's going to be going to paramedic school as well.
Wow. So, I mean, we can't compete with what registered nurses can make.
He was an ICU nurse.
Oh, my gosh!
Yeah, I, I think he, I think he needs a little more adrenaline in his life, evidently.
Ah, my, and he tries adrenaline for money.
I think a lot of do. I took a twenty thousand dollar year cut and pay when I became a fireman twenty-seven years ago.
Oh, be still my heart. I, I, well, I'm just, I'm just stunned because I know registered nurses can now command their own salaries. So that was really stunning to see that we had one on our fire team.
Especially during COVID. Some of them are making upwards of eighty dollars an hour. He got that up to be a rookie here at the Duncanville Fire Department.
Well, we're with you. I don't know what you did to get him to come. Did you know him?
I did not know him, uh, but a friend of his that he went to school with works here as well.
Ah, well, right on, right on. We like that, Mike.
Yeah, we're excited.
We are indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, chief, I just, I just want you to know that, uh, when I take shop Duncanville seriously, because, uh, when I was in near Austin and, uh, broke my ankle, uh, they asked that I would just go by Austin, go by the paramedics and let them look at it. But I drove, we drove back from Austin to Duncanville and didn't come home, went right to the, uh, uh, to the fire station. So you didn't have to come to my house, even though my insurance company asked me to do that. I stopped by your office to get a look at, but I shopped Duncanville because I didn't, uh, stop in Austin to get looked at. I came right to Duncanville Fire Station and they did a great job of telling me that, uh, that I messed up an ankle. So thank you very much for your, all you guys.
Good. If they, if they step out of line, you let me know.
All right. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions for Chief Ryan? All right. Thank you, chief. I know we kept you late tonight.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Take care. All right, we're going to, uh, recess, um, city council in just a moment. Of course, we're going to take up our two executive sessions. Our executive session number one, city council should convene and to close executive session pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seventy-one and five fifty-one point zero seventy-two to consult a city attorney concerning acquisition of real property and eminent domain proceedings filed in cause number CC dash twenty-one dash zero zero two one one dash E. City of Duncanville, Texas versus Tommy Winwin Properties and CC two zero dash zero three six one one dash A, City of Duncanville, Texas versus Canaan Baptist Church, Dallas County, at law number five and number one respectively. Executive session number two, city council should convene and to close the executive session, return to section fifty-one, five fifty-one point zero seventy-one and five fifty-one point zero seventy-four to seek legal advice from city attorney and deliberate the appointment duties of the president of the Board of Directors of the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation. The timestamp is ten twenty PM. We are going to recess city council at ten twenty. City council members, please log out of this and go to executive session.